Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Town of Los Gatos Council Meeting for August 19, 2025. We have really just several items on the agenda, and we'll take them in the order that it was posted. But first, we have some things we need to get out of the way. So could we get started with the roll call, please?
Councilmember Risto?
Here.
Councilmember Reni?
Here.
Councilmember Badami?
Here.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Here.
Mayor Hudes?
Here. Okay, thank you. And now, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. And if I could ask Councilmember Risto to lead us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. So we'll get started with a presentation for the Friends of the Library. And I see we have quite a few members here. So I'm going to come down there and read our presentation. Okay. I'm glad to see so many of you, so many friends. The Friends of the Library is an all-volunteer 501(c)(3) nonprofit. Its mission is to support and enrich the Los Gatos Public Library. Founded in 1994, the Friends volunteers annually raised tens of thousands of dollars to sustain hundreds of library programs and events, including programs for children, teens, and families, and summer reading events. The group raises money through book sales at the Friends bookstore, just on the other side of the plaza here, as well as through sales of specialty books online, direct donations, grants, and membership giving. Tonight, we are honoring their commitment to our library and community as they present a check to the library for $70,000.
Last year, we gave $60,000, and this year, we are giving $70,000 for the wonderful programs at the library.
Well, thank you all very much. And I know our residents treasure our library and all that you do for our library. So thank you again. Okay, so now, we come to the consent items on our agenda. And there are 10 consent items. And so before we discuss or make a movement on them, I will ask whether we have any comments, verbal communications. And I see we have one from Gus Hu. And I don't know--
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
A town attorney today. And I noticed that we have one member of the council that's appearing remotely today. And so, under the Brown Act, if you could just announce your remote appearance, and I can confirm that your location has been publicly posted? Is that correct?
That's a question for me, right?
Yeah, sorry.
My location is on the agenda, and the agenda has been posted. And I have sent a picture of it to the clerk, so they have that record.
Okay, that's sufficient. Thank you so much. I'm sorry to interrupt. Thank you.
Oh, thank you for doing that. Yes, this is for consent.
This is for nine and 10 consent. The code of conduct, that's the first thing. I think that you guys should put, shouldn't be in writing, it's verbal communication, you know, pull people aside, especially through anybody that works for the city or the town, because there's a lot of miscommunication going on. And it should be, you don't want it on the record, because there's a lot of miscommunication. So verbal communication, you should write into the codes of conduct of talking to people. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So that's the only comment that I have on the consent items. So I don't see an issue that needs to have that item pulled. So if any of the council members would like to comment on the consent items, or make a motion? Councilmember Risto?
I move to approve consent items, one through 10.
Vice Mayor?
Second.
Okay. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Risto?
Aye.
Councilmember Reni?
Aye.
Councilmember Badami?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Hudes?
Aye. So that passes, and we will now move on to item number 11, which is to receive the biannual police services report for January to June 2025. And, sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. I missed verbal. Okay. Sorry, Chief. We're going to go back and do verbal communications. And so I have, first is Rich Daniel, followed by Ben Daniel.
Hello. I speak in opposition of the development for 235 Oak Meadow Drive. And if you don't know what that is, which you wouldn't, it's a two-story office building that was originally developed in 1965. It sits right next to my home, where I have lived since 2005. The current owner of that development would like to build a 14-unit high-rise residential development, which would go, which would reach 79 feet 6 inches in height. And, but most importantly, from my perspective, would change the zoning from office to residential. And the office use that is there, and was designed to be there, is naturally complementary to the surrounding residential uses. It also was never intended to be developed for something that intensive. And then, as part of that process, unfortunately, the developer's attorney sent the homeowners association a letter threatening to sue us. And so we had to engage counsel. And as part of that, we have been advised, at least in our council's opinion, that in order to change the zoning from office to residential, that would require a change to the general plan. And so, you know, I don't think we, as a town, should be changing our commercial uses to residential, especially for a development which will only have 14 units, would have a minimal impact on the housing goals of this town, but would utterly change the character of the community and of the planned development, which was put in place in 1965 for this development and its surrounding uses. In addition to that, it would have a negative impact on the individuals who currently attend the lessies of that office project, which are currently therapists. So 75 or more, based upon the developer's estimate, people every day go there for therapy, and that use would be wiped away with this proposed development. And of course, it doesn't take much imagination to see that happening with every piece of commercial property in Los Gatos, whether that be an auto repair shop or anything else. So I think it's bad precedent, and obviously, it has a negative impact to me and my neighbors. With that, I'm going to turn it over to my son, who, Ben Daniel, who wrote everything he is going to say here without any help from his parents.
Okay, thank you. And you each have three minutes, because I have a card for your son, so.
Dear Los Gatos Town Council, my name is Ben Daniel, and I live in the Regency Court HOA community. I understand that some people would like to construct a large 14-unit, six-story apartment complex right next to my house, but I do not agree with this decision. If it were built, I would not be able to play on my street. And if there was an emergency, it would be much harder to leave with 14 or more cars in front of us. Also, on the weekends, my family and I like to run errands, because there's not too much work, school. But our family can't do that if many other people leave around the same time as us. So, to the Los Gatos Town Council, please do not, please do not build this apartment complex for these reasons and more. Sincerely, Ben Daniel.
Thank you very much. Doila Daniel, thank you.
Hi, Council. As my son just reiterated to you, that one of his concerns is traffic on our street. And I don't know if you guys know where this is, but we're kind of in a unique area on Oak Meadow Drive. We're sort of close to Vessona. I mean, it's sort of in our backyard, and so is Oak Meadow Park. And so there's a small little road that goes around, and that road at some little turn is about 20 feet, right? So imagine during the summer months, when we all know that traffic in Los Gatos is quite hectic with beach traffic. And if there's an emergency, to get an emergency vehicle to that area, it's difficult. The other thing I want to make sure that everybody knows, it's not just the summer months, it's also in December, when we have Vessona, right? The fantasy of lights. We have a lot of traffic as well that goes onto our private road, and that also becomes an issue. And if we add 14 more units that are six-story high, that's also going to add congestion in that area. The other thing I wanted to say is that you would have to remove a ton of trees. We have so much beautiful wildlife out there. We have bunnies and rabbits in the summer, I mean, in the spring, and we love to see them come out. It's kind of that, hey, it's springtime that comes out. We also have owls. I know that, no, not everybody loves an owl, but we do have an owl, and we love him. And he's, you know, part of our community as well. We also have foxes, we have coyotes, we have all kinds of wildlife. And that's part of the uniqueness of our community. So I too would like you to not approve this unit. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Art Valionis, and then Frank Farsidi.
Councilmembers, thank you very much for letting me speak. And I'm continuing the same kind of topic. It's 235 Oak Meadow, which kind of proposes this massive development. I'm Art Valionis, live on 211 Oak Meadow, bit farther from Daniel's, but I think it will affect everybody who lives on Oak Meadow Street. And I agree with Daniel's points that actually, the project requires the rezoning, and I would call it spot zoning. It's not approved by the council, and it is not in the general plan. It's sort of, oh, let's do it for this particular project. This, if we start this, there will be no way back, and we will do that spot zoning, and we will destroy town, kind of, you know, vibrant town, which we have right now. Secondly, it doesn't agree with the neighborhood heights and vibe and everything. So look at the buildings there. If you can walk Oak Meadow Drive, you will see this rusty, brown, nice buildings, which kind of blend with the nature. And if you build this five-story plus with the elevator, the seven-story house, which is like a wall, I don't think it fits in the neighborhood very nicely, and around oak trees, which we have there, and the creek, which we have there. Also, this project does not comply with what's legally allowed. In 0.5 acres, where you should, you could build only five to nine units, actually, with the state density bonus, you can build 12 units. They propose 14. But that's not the only problem. The problem is that they also have incomplete and missing title reports, inconsistent affordability claims, parking layouts, which require tandem spaces, which are not allowed by the town. So there are many, many things which are flagged in their paperwork, which they submitted. I think it's intentional. They want to push this through the town, that some project is not compatible with the town even, you know, regulations. So, and of course, traffic. Imagine 14 units, which are not allowed, will bring 30 cars plus. So there will be two cars per unit plus service vehicles, guests, and so on. If you walk that street, there are no way to fit these cars. So I think it's a very big problem. And in short, I would like to say that this project benefits private developer over the expense of the community. And it fails on zoning scale, on density, and parking, and transparency. And please protect and future of this character and future of Los Gatos, and reject this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Frank Farsidi, and then Gus Hu.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to continue our opposition. I live in the same neighborhood, and we are close to this project, the proposed project. I would like to bring everybody's attention to the impact to the infrastructure, besides, you know, our neighbors reiterated here about the impacts of the trees. We definitely, this project is going to remove a number of trees, and these are protected trees that have been there for a long time. We are right, we're talking about right next to the creek. And also, I think it's not in the best interest of the town, because it is so out of character. This whole zone, this whole area is really low to mid-level residential, with a mix of office. And this project with 14 units is going to have a significant impact to the existing public works infrastructure that the town has. So by that, I mean the existing sewer system, existing stormwater. So they're going to contribute significantly to the stormwater runoff, for example. They're going to take out these trees, and it's going to generate a lot of stormwater runoff. And no matter what BMPs they do, there will be impacts to the nearby creek that's there. So it's definitely going to change the environment, not, you know, we're not going to see it the next day of the project, but this is a significant impact over the life of this project, because of the size of it. It's just significantly out of character, and it will strain the infrastructure that the town has. I mean, we're talking about both, also during the construction, there's going to be significant traffic that will damage the roads the town has. And, you know, it will impact that significantly, and, you know, besides the parking and the infrastructure that we have. So I would like to ask to, yeah, for you all to join us in rejecting this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Gus Hu, and then Susan Bassey.
Mayor, Council. Hey, school started again, which brought me into this, me into this kind of thing with the easement way back when. I'm starting to get used to talking to you guys. I'm not a good public speaker, as you know. But children's lives are still what mattered the most. And on Lynn Avenue, the traffic backed up, Lynn Avenue, Pinehurst, all the way up to, and turned into Blossom Valley Drive, four cars back yesterday, I counted. So, and there's that safety issue. And if kid gets hurt, or, you know, somebody dies, especially like, and it's the same thing across the street, you, I think you guys are, I'm putting that out there, I have lawsuits going to try to stop some of this stuff. And you guys are to be liable. It's one of those things, there's negligence involved. And I'm not trying to accuse you, but you got to think of safety first. Hiring, another thing is hiring practices. There should be an investigation, because I think there's some funny things going on in the hiring, but I'd like to take that off, you know, verbal stuff. Water bills, like, same stuff. Because the easement, me and Santa Claus, there's a guy, Santa Claus, he's been there for 60, really long, 65s, whatever things. But he had a whole bunch of roses. He had to finally take them out. I sent you pictures in a little while ago. He had to take them all out, because he couldn't afford it. He's retired, he lives on a pension. And he used to be, Santa Clara Rose Society, he used to have people bus in there. And it was, he, the easement, PG&E gave him, you know, let him use the easement for growing roses. And I like to, you know, take some flowers and pass them out, because I'm a bum. Project 2025, it's coming to conclusion, martial law. I sent you in an article on USA Today, Oklahoma will require teachers from New York, California to provide Back America First. As you know, I'm Trump's, I say Trump's the Antichrist. There's plenty of evidence showing that he staged his stuff, and I've sent that stuff in. I also have sued Oklahoma years back, under fracking, because I had some dreams, and they, Richter Scale, they did, they don't keep accurate things.
Thank you.
Project 2026.
Yeah, thank you for coming forward. Susan Bassey.
Good evening. My name is Susan Bassey. I've been a Santa Clara resident since 1990. I've been a local publisher here in Los Gatos of my Out and About magazine. And in 2017, I began training as an investigative reporter. My work appears in the Davis Vanguard and online on social media. I do report on social media, because a number of people are getting their news that way. The Davis Vanguard is an online news publication that mostly covers the courts and local government. I have been working on issues for a number of years, dating back to all the protests around George Floyd, the anti-hate protests. I am sure that my public records requests are a little bit dreaded by city staff. But I want to bring up something that recently happened, because I have been following for a number of years the issues that took place and arising, most significantly, when the mayor's husband, Jeff Scott, came down upset over something that was said in public comment about his family. I understand that the comments were inappropriate, but more inappropriate was the reaction of Mr. Scott. And he was the mayor's husband at the time, and he is a planning commissioner employee for the City of San Jose. And he was represented by divorce attorney Nicole Ford, who happens to be the chair of the county's Domestic Violence Council. And I saw the video. It was taken by an NBC stringer, and she was mortified at what she saw. I saw the Los Gatos police watching Mr. Scott. His wife is head of CASI, who we put a great deal of money in, including the concert that we just had on Sunday. The proceeds go to CASI as an organization. I've had children that went to Los Gatos High, and I understand all the background on that. I am currently following specifically the issues related to Ms. Hogan and the Tate Street Code compliance issues. I attended a hearing, the administrative hearing, that was in front of Mr. Blum on the day before yesterday. And I attended that hearing. I documented that hearing. I was allowed to record it. And at the conclusion of the hearing, I asked to take photographs of the exhibits, which would entail Ms. Hogan's signs. There were two contract attorneys with, in the hearing. One was Barbara Choi, the other one was Lance Bayer. They both told me they would assist me in getting the records at the clerk's office. After speaking with Mr. Blum for a minute, I went to the clerk's office, and I waited over an hour and 45 minutes for the records that were in, printed out, and put into the hearing. I told them that I was asking for the records under California's Public Access to Records request, which is Government Code 6253A. The city attorney can confirm that. And that, I have also sent a complaint to the clerk's office. But I was not given access to those records. They treated it as a 10-day production.
Thank you.
The town has a number of policies and procedures that are problematic to public records, and I'm making a complaint, and I want it fixed. And I'm making a complaint and I want it fixed. Or we're gonna be subject to another taxpayer lawsuit like the Neymar case.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay, I have no more cards here for verbal communications. Do we have anyone online who has their hand raised?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, so I will close verbal communications and get back to item eleven, which is to receive the police report. So Chief Field, thank you for being here. And we're eager to hear the report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So before you hear this evening is the biannual police report that will represent the timeframe of January through June of twenty twenty-five. I recognize that it was a very robust and comprehensive staff report, so I'll do my best to synthesize some of that information and then be available for questions afterwards. If we can go ahead and put the slide deck up on the screen? Okay, so it'll follow a very similar flow as what we have seen in the past. And I always like to start off by talking about our staff. We continue to seek stability within our staffing structure. We've been able to hire three police officers within this reportable timeframe. One of those was a graduate from the academy. And many of you, or a couple of you, attended the swearing-in ceremony here in June. We also hired a recruit to go into the academy in June of this year. Unfortunately, did not continue in the academy, was unsuccessful there. So we did lose that recruit. We still have one in the academy. The community service officer interns, that's a great opportunity where they work on a part-time basis. And we hired three during this reportable time period. And they are still with the department, still going through training. We also did some promotions. We promoted a sergeant, Sergeant Burley. And we brought one of our records specialists into our dispatch center, which then opened up a position within our records. But we do have some folks in backgrounds for that process. During this reportable time, we also opened a captain's position in anticipation of an upcoming retirement. And just yesterday, as many of you know, we filled that position with Captain, soon-to-be Captain Greg Burromeo, who is with us here this evening. I'll move on to the next slide. I'd also like to add, I should have stayed on that last slide for a moment, but I'll add that we do have several positions still open within the police department. We are anticipating another oral board here within the next month. Those are due to some of the academy cadets that were not successful. Like I mentioned, we still do have somebody in there. We are budgeted for thirty-nine officers. Right now, on roster, we have thirty-five. And we have a lateral that will be joining our department on Monday. So that will bring us up to thirty-six with three vacancies. So I will move into the fiscal budget piece of things. So we, we continue to seek sustainable revenue and other cost containment efforts. One of the first ones up there in your upper left, we're quite proud of, the largest grant that the police department has ever received, just shy of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We applied for that in early spring. And we're awarded that in May. That will allow us the ability to train our officers, provide additional resources to address, prevent, and hopefully educate. But also have some additional enforcement efforts out there through training resources. Two of those resources being vehicles, which were brought to council for approval in the last council process. The Police Foundation is continuing to do a lot of fundraising for us. We've been beneficiaries of that in terms of training, for accountability training. They also hosted just recently the National Night Out that I know some of you attended. So that was wonderful. And they also provided us with ballistic helmets and are also assisting with some of our vests as well. In addition, you'll see here in a future meeting or two, an update to our alarm ordinance. And that was something that was recommended by the Meliora recommendations, where right now, currently, in our alarm ordinance is only for commercial alarms. And as you may see in the staff report, there's quite a few residential alarms that we respond to. So we are looking at expanding one of our existing vendors that helps us with our parking management and to utilize that vendor to assist us in managing some of our residential alarms. And that will also be a revenue stream for us as well. And then finally, for the Montessorino Services Agreement that came to end, a thirty-year end just earlier this year. And we continued that with negotiations that more accurately reflect cost recovery. And that will continue for another five years. So we look forward to continuing our partnership with the City of Montessorino. So with technology, we see technology as a solution for us in the event of, you know, expanding the, the population. We see there's a lot more developments. The police department has not grown in about two decades. So our solution to that is really looking towards technology to allow us to be more efficient and to be able to reach out even further and to utilize some best practices that we are seeing within the profession of law enforcement. Axon is a very large agreement vendor that we currently have. They're the, the company that manages our body-worn cameras, all of our evidence, digital evidence systems, a lot of our in-car camera systems as well. And so they can even expand even further. And so we're looking into what some of that might be that will allow us to take some of our paper processes into more of an automated environment. Also allowing us to utilize systems that will allow us for translation abilities and the body-worn camera function, where we can better reach and communicate more fluently with our diverse community as well. Some of our community police cabinet had the opportunity to utilize some of this Axon technology through the Oculus, and some of you may have seen that as well, which allows for our officers to have a more realistic training environment. The RTCC stands for the Real-Time Crime Center. And that pairs down with the camera systems as well. This is an opportunity for us to further expand our public-private partnerships, where we can tie in some of the surveillance cameras that are out there with the commercial residential businesses privately owned, and also utilize some of the town cameras as well to have a better situational awareness of what's taking place within our community to prevent and then also investigate crimes or other conduct happening within our community. DFR is for the DF, the Drone Program. Drone for First Responder is what it stands for, and that's an autonomous drone. And that's the direction that many communities are going towards. So it's much swifter response. It also allows for de-escalation when we have a higher visibility of what's taking place. We can assess what those resource needs might be and then respond appropriately. Our calls for service, we strive to maintain a priority call-for-service structure of five, ten, and fifteen minutes. And we usually range somewhere between three and a half to five minutes for that Priority One call range. You'll see in this reportable timeframe that we are actually at three and a half minutes, meaning that's when we're showing up on scene for that Priority One, which are generally your person's crimes in progress type of crimes. So that's great to see that we're still able to achieve that with our staffing situation currently. And then we'd like to do a comparison from prior reportable timeframe of twenty twenty-four to this year, so you can see any changes that took place. And what you see for our communications center is very similar. For this year, we had, during this reportable timeframe, about twenty-four thousand calls that they handled, whether incoming and outgoing. That's incorporating all three of those different colors on the pie chart. And then last year, we had about twenty-seven thousand calls, so a difference of about three thousand. Especially with the start of school, there's a lot of interest surrounding traffic enforcement. And you'll see that our traffic enforcement numbers, in terms of the enforcement component of it for citations, did drop slightly. It looks like about by three hundred. That could be due to staffing. It could also be due to our motor unit having to be folded into our beach structure. But we anticipate, as we get another motor, you know, motorcycle unit who does that traffic enforcement trained up, that we may see some of those numbers go back up to what we saw last year. In addition, over in the slide to your right, that's for the documented reports during this reportable timeframe. And you'll see that some of those reports increased by about one hundred. So we still have a lot of activity out there. And actually, some of our uniformed officers that are here with us this evening, they're with a team that, within the last four shifts, they had proactive stops of about fifty-one proactive stops, nine arrests, and almost a DUI arrest each evening. So there is still a lot of activity out there, and that is with only three officers on. So there's a lot of, lot of enforcement, a lot of visibility, and a lot of engagement with our community that is taking place. So on the community engagement piece to things, that is really the cornerstone for our model here with Los Gatos-Montessorino Police Department is that engagement and community policing and partnering with our community in many different ways that you'll see represented in the blue tabs up there on the screen. We again participated in the Special Olympics torch run, as we do every year. We participated in at least seventeen community events and meetings for neighborhood watches. And this also includes our engagement with our Community Emergency Response Team as well, of which we were able to recruit at least seventeen two members to. So that was exciting. Additionally, we completed our third Community Police Academy. And some of you, I know, were present for that graduation, well-attended. Our officers had the opportunity to learn, listen, share with that eight-week program. Our fourth Community Police Academy is on hold right now. Will reassess for twenty twenty-six in the fall. But the third one did go over quite well, so we hope to be able to offer that again in twenty twenty-six. For fleet, I wanted to offer an overview of that because that has been a discussion periodically. And I break that down really into three different buckets, if you will. And I'll start with our fleet that encompasses more special use, grant, or donated resources. And that's related to a lot of our volunteer functions, whether it be CERT or DART. Also, our bicycles and motorcycles, some of those have NUTVs. Some of those have been grant-funded or purchased through the donations through the Police Foundation as well. A lot of those are utilized for emergency response or special events or critical incidents. The next grouping, if you will, will be the unmarked and specialized vehicles. And those are primarily for our Investigations Bureau, as well as for the administration, which is both captains and myself as well. Allows us to go out to various regional meetings and also operate in the undercover capacity for investigations while they're doing their follow-up throughout the region. And then finally, the final bucket, if you will, will be our marked patrol fleet. We have fourteen vehicles within that fleet. Our school resource officer drives one of those marked vehicles. This is the most visible aspect of our fleet, I believe, for, for the town. And what's wonderful about it is we have the ability to, for instance, last week, when we did saturation patrols for all of the schools within our school district, we were able to hold over our night shift. So that we did have enough vehicles to be driven from our night shift and day shift to go out and have officers present at each one of the schools within our school district to provide the saturation patrols. And like I mentioned, there's fourteen, that's two supervisor vehicles, specially outfitted. School resource officer, K-9 vehicles, and then the patrol vehicles, which are truly the mobile offices for officers for a twelve-hour timeframe throughout the day and offer a lot of different tools and resources to them. I wanted to touch upon the community survey that we had this earlier this year. And it came back with very exceptional scores for the police department that we were quite proud of. And I'll highlight that from the twenty twenty-two, when we did the last survey, one of those that we saw the biggest gain in actually jumped by seven percent, additional improvement. So while we still are working through our staffing, making a lot of progress, we're still able to reach out to the community and provide that level of service that they are seeking. There was some feedback within that survey that recognized maybe interest in additional traffic enforcement. And we will be addressing that and we'll be able to get more motorcycle present officers out there as we're able to get them trained up and staff available. Last November, I brought before council the report from Meliora, the public safety assessment of our department that we had done last year through the support of council. Thank you for that. And it brought forth a hundred and thirty recommendations. And while they're just recommendations, we went through and prioritized those and took a look at what was the low-hanging fruit and then what we could start prioritizing and really addressing. And in this reportable timeframe, we were able to address an additional twenty-nine of those recommendations that really span throughout the five different themes that came out of the Meliora report. One of them that I would like to highlight that I know there has been some interest in is on the space assessment for our police operations building. Because one of the common themes that we saw was the need for consolidation, to remove redundancy, provide efficiency, and really streamline some of our resources and public safety to our community. And we anticipate, as you saw in the staff report, that we will be able to bring forward. We just completed an RFQ for that space assessment. And we'll be probably bringing that forward within the next month to move forward on that space assessment study. So we've made some significant progress there. Some of the recommendations are attached to funding needs. And if I were to put those into various different areas, it would be surrounding the building, consolidation and improvements. In our dispatch center, there was recommendations for several additional full-time employees and then technology, which we've already touched upon. And if we expand upon technology, we will be, of course, informing the council. This is an item of interest that I've seen throughout the state. And the automated license plate reader, we were actually, I believe, the second within the county to introduce flock within our community here. And we've seen a lot of success, even today, at about four-thirty, there is additional success with the flock system. We're very cautious about how we introduce this to, to our community. There are still seventeen cameras that the town owns. And then there's an additional, I believe, nineteen cameras that Montessorino has installed as well. There's also private cameras. What I'll mention is that up until about two years ago, we did not share any of that information outside of Los Gatos. Two years ago, we came back to council and had a conversation about expanding that for various reasons, investigative ability, against situational awareness. And we expanded our sharing throughout the county, and that's where it stops. SB thirty-four, Senate Bill thirty-four in two thousand and fifteen, governs how automated license plate reader data is shared. And it really addresses a policy that needs to be in place, auditing processes, and other concerns that I've seen addressed throughout various media outlets. Then several years later, we had Senate Bill fifty-four, which, the California Values Act, which addresses concerns surrounding immigration. Automated license plate readers are not utilized for immigration purposes, nor are they searched by our federal partners or authorities, or can be accessed by that. And some of that information is up here on the slide. It's really a tool to be able to do further outreach and investigative abilities. Our officers lean on it in many instances for that follow-up and for searching for missing persons and other needs. This will be the last, one of the last slides here, but I always like to leave you with the next steps. We talked about what we've done, where we're at, and where we're going. Some of our priorities and themes as we move forward is really focusing, as you saw in the report, for our communications infrastructure upgrade. A lot of that will be funded through CalOES for moving our analog communication system to a more current digital system. Also looking at some of the, the phone system infrastructure there that is quite outdated. And so we are looking to update that. Regional preparedness, we know that we have Super Bowl sixty in February, and we have FIFA World Cup coming in June of next year. So like I've told my team, we're moving through the end of this year in a project mode. And then we will move into more of an operational position of really assuring for continuity of our teams, structure of our teams, and ability of our teams, not just from patrol to investigations, but also our specialty teams, including our tactical teams, our negotiation, de-escalation teams, drone, bike, and those sorts. I mentioned already about traffic enforcement expansion, the staffing stability, and continuing on for the Meliora assessment recommendations. We will continue to work on some of those that are already in progress. And that concludes my presentation, but I remain available for any questions.
Verbal communications on this.
Verbal communications on this first, if that's okay, and then we'll get back to some questions. So I don't have any cards. Is there anyone online who would like to ask a question about the police report? Come forward.
World Cup, just was wondering how much your budget was, because I know it's not to be enough. The, on the World Cup, Super Bowl, and March Madness, I was just trying to give you a heads up on that, but I just was wondering if you have enough in there, so.
No, thank you. Those are questions that the council can ask if they choose to. Thank you. Okay, I don't see any other, anyone else online?
There's one hand raised on him. Paul?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Yeah, yes, you missed my hand being raised to speak about the development on Oak Meadow Drive. I'm on the board of the Regency Court HOA, and I'd like to at least speak about that if you would let me.
Yeah, unfortunately, that item is closed. I apologize, I've been scanning for hand raises, I didn't see it. So I apologize for that, but we will be able to take your comments at the next council meeting.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we'll close public comment and get back to the council. I'm sure has some questions or would like to go deeper on some things. Councilmember Risto.
Thank you. At the moment, I just have one question, but I do appreciate the comprehensive report. It's always good to hear periodically how one of our departments, including the police department, is doing, and lots of good news. One question I have is the $250,000 DUI grant, and one comment you made was it was a revenue stream. What I'm curious about is, will that cover full-cost recovery for our DUI enforcement? And the other question is, is that so much money that we can increase what we're doing for DUI? Like, how does that impact operations?
Thank you for the question. So yeah, so we'll increase our ability for the enforcement and for the visibility as well. What's included in that grant is two additional vehicles that will be covered by the grant. So that will bring our fleet up to sixteen. And what we'll be able to use those vehicles for is for dedicated enforcement, so going out and doing some DUI dedicated enforcement in the evenings, and that will be noted. We have to do several of those throughout the year. In addition, it also allows us to bring forward for our staff different trainings for the field sobriety tests and advanced beyond that for impaired driving and for controlled substance identification and awareness as well. It also will allow us to invest in training one of our officers as really a subject matter expert in that field. So it covers relatively, I want to say, somewhere around fifteen different trainings, give or take where that's at, and the two additional vehicles. So we'll have more confident and trained officers out there that will continue beyond this year, and those two vehicles will stay within our fleet, which we'll be able to deploy out for these purposes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the report. Always a lot of impressive work that y'all are getting up to, and big congratulations to the department for our new captain, and thank you to our outgoing captain for his long and dedicated service. So had sort of two categories I wanted to ask about. The first is e-bikes, which perhaps surprising no one. I wanted to understand a little bit more about, A, sort of more generally, the approach to enforcement, right? Because that's a challenge, you know, in sort of all kinds of ways. And then you talked about the sort of saturation approach. Can you talk about how that went, if that was effective, and sort of what you're seeing working and what's not working?
Absolutely. With the start of school, we knew that the e-bikes would be a concern for us, for the community, for the town, and for the schools. There was early partnership that already took place with our school resource officer reaching out to all the various schools and talking about some education that could be brought on the campus. We know that each year, the bike rodeos take place generally in the fall and also throughout the year, but that's when they begin. And our school resource officer works with Safe Routes to School, Wendy Riggs with Safe Routes to School. We talked with her just as recently as today, and also talks to the school superintendents in formulating a plan. In addition, there's also training specifically that's in-house for all of our officers so that they are very comfortable in going out and making that enforcement. We try to do a lot of education and working with these partnerships. A most e-bike-related, almost every e-bike-related violation is an infraction, and we want to make sure that we're focused on safety. So we're not going to pursue e-bikes when they're potentially riding recklessly because we recognize that that's going to put our community at risk, the rider at risk, and that's not, that's probably not going to play out in a positive light. So we're trying to get on the front end of this. But what we did last week is we made sure that we held overnight shift. So it worked with our investigations team, we put them in uniform, we pulled some folks from training and put all of our resources into the visibility in educating the parents and being out there on campus and just reminding folks of the dangers surrounding that. And so there was a good deal of contacts that were made last week. There was also, I don't have in front of me the exact numbers, I want to say, it's somewhere around the range of twenty-eight citations that were issued within those two days, and that was just during that two-hour period. And I'm just, am I kind of trying to remember that? But anyway, we did try to get out and do that visibility. So there's some kind of, there's some thought process there before they're putting their kids on e-bikes to traverse to school, making sure that there are helmets being worn.
Thank you. Councilmember, councilmember Rennie?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to send a special congratulations to Sergeant Borromeo. He was my first contact with the Los Gatos Monasterino Police Department fourteen years ago when he gave me a ride-along, and at the time, I found him to be exceptionally knowledgeable and exceptionally professional officer. I've watched his career develop, his hard work and growth up to now, and I think it's a very well-deserved promotion, so congratulations to now our soon-to-be Captain Borromeo.
Thank you. I would add that I wanted to make some comments about that as well, and it's terrific to see the ability to grow senior officers from within our staff who know the community. So I did have a question, which came to my mind when we were looking at the use of the license plate reader information. And I think recently, some other states have used that information as a backdoor to restrict health services provided to women. What is the ability of our system to restrict backdoor entry, not through the federal government, but perhaps through other municipalities or jurisdictions? And because of that, have other municipalities pulled back on sharing that data, other California municipalities? Have they pulled back on sharing that data because of that concern?
I'm not aware of anybody pulling, of any jurisdiction pulling back on some of the sharing of information. So we're actually pretty restrictive for our police department, where we only hold on to the data for up to thirty days. There are some jurisdictions that expand to beyond a year, and we only share within the county. So that's very restrictive. There are many that share throughout the state. In terms of the sharing of that information for the purposes that you had mentioned, in order to search any of these databases, it has to be an official within our police department. That's, and it's an audited trail. So if, not just anybody can access those systems. The data that's captured is really, it's not an AI-based system, it is the vehicle itself, and it's some characteristics of the vehicle, it's not the individuals. In order to search those systems, there has to be an incident number or database that's entered, and it has an auditing ability. We have an administrator that oversees that to assure that we are abiding by the policy that is front-facing online, and we have a transparency portal that has all of this information outlined, along with the agencies that we do share with on our transparency portal.
Okay, thank you. And I think we've had some excellent results with FLOC. I know that statistics were presented in some earlier reports about the really substantial number of arrests, stops, and arrests that we're able to make based on someone being a criminal and entering Los Gatos. And so, you know, for those that worry about this, this is the exact opposite of profiling. This is not taking a general view of who you might stop. This is taking a very specific individual who has committed a crime and having the information to make that stop. It's very effective, and I hope that we're able to continue to have those results. Yes, councilmember Badami.
Thank you. So I want to echo some of the comments from my fellow councilmembers. Sergeant Borromeo, always a smile on your face and a comfort to everyone in our community. Captain Tada, working with you, under you supervising the victim service unit, it was a pleasure. Thank you for your professionalism. To our chief, we're so very proud of you. Thank you for your leadership. We're very proud of our police department. Just keep up the good work. Thank you for your presentation.
Councilmember Risto.
Thank you. One more question, and then I do want to offer my congratulations as well to some of our officers. Following up on the e-bike issue and in terms of the citations, and I think we'll be having further discussions, I know that I have a ton of people coming to me and complaining about e-bikes, and what I try to point out to them is, in a lot of cases, the problem isn't actually a legal e-bike, they're street illegal pseudo motorcycles. And so I would be curious, as citations come through on e-bikes, are students being cited because they're riding a legal, legitimate e-bike dangerously? And how many of these kids are on bikes that are seriously go-too-fast, they've been hacked, or they're not street-legal bikes? And I don't know if we're starting to break that out, but I think there is where we have to do some real education with the parents. But in terms of this start back to school, do you have any information about what kind of stops were made regarding e-bikes?
On each of the days of last week, I think that there was two encounters with e-bikes. And then, of course, there was one yesterday that we did post on social media that was related to an accident. What we're seeing is we're trying to do the education, partner with the school, sending out some information. The school resource officer is working on some of that curriculum with the schools. But it's a change in behavior that we're really seeking to address here. And I recognize that e-bikes are a way to get to school and a way to circumvent some of the traffic that we see because of the, there's not another system for them to potentially get there in a swift manner. But there is definitely a lot of interest in e-bikes over bicycles, over drop-offs, and over walking. And so that's where the concern lies. In terms of the difference between the legal ones or the ones that have been hacked, we don't have any of the data on that. When it comes to documenting traffic accidents, the requirements are, whether it's a bicycle, a pedestrian, or a vehicle, those are the different sections that we mark. So it doesn't break down whether it's a e-bike or not, or what type of bike it is. So to pull that data is a little bit potentially challenging for us. And also to catch up to these bikes, I recognize that some of them are in large groups that are traveling, and that's, that can be problematic because we don't want to entice something even more reckless to occur. So we're trying to find other mechanisms to address this, hopefully at their final destination, which might be a school.
Okay, well, thank you. I hope eventually the rest of the state can catch up to the pilot program happening in Marin, where class-two e-bikes will be restricted to sixteen years and older, and helmets are required, and there will be more restrictions, because I think legally and ethically, we're catching up to technology.
I will say that we were able to bring forward Assembly Bill eight-seventy-five this year, which is specific to e-bikes, and that will add additional sections within the tow component of the vehicle code, where there's areas that don't address some of the e-bikes, and so we cannot remove the e-bikes. And so should that pass, that will allow us to tow or remove these e-bikes. And likely, in order to receive those e-bikes back, that somebody will have to, the person riding will have to complete a educational test.
Okay, perfect. And I'm sure there will be more on this. I did want to offer my congratulations, first of all, to you, Chief. I mean, each year, you're working and growing the department well and developing your officers and just seeing how the team is coming together is just really a tribute to the community, to you, to the whole department. And then I want to congratulate Captain Tada. I've known you for many years, and it's hard to imagine, like, every time we have a really accomplished officer retire, I think, oh, my gosh, how can you leave? You know, it's, you're part of Los Gatos, but I know that people have next chapters, and I appreciate everything you've done and will continue to do while you're here. And then, soon-to-be Captain Borromeo, I've known you for many years, between our work together on transportation commissions, but especially bike rodeos, where I've helped out. And Greg Borromeo is known as Officer Boss by many of the kids because he would play the role of a boss as the students were riding their bikes in the parking lot going around. And I've mentioned this before, but I just, you know, I know every officer has to display a huge amount of, like, mental agility to deal with taking care of a young child, comforting someone on the worst day of their life, arresting some horrible criminal, dealing with different things all day, every day, and not knowing what you face at work. And I think, like, the perfect example of that is when I see Sergeant Borromeo showing up in SWAT gear, and I'm picturing Officer Boss, and it's just like all the different aspects. And anyway, congratulations, very well deserved, and I think for the whole department, it says a lot when we can promote, when we do an nationwide search and realize that the best person, whether it's a cap, whether it's a chief coming from within, whether it's a captain coming from within, it reinforces what's happening here and how good it is. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's an honor to do this report out because it's really reporting on the good work of the whole team that we have here and how they pull together through all sorts of times to really deliver the service that the community deserves and wants. And so we appreciate the support from the community and from all of you as well. And that promotion will occur the same week as our police recognition luncheon, which will be on October sixteenth. So there'll be more information to come on that with Sergeant Borromeo promoting to captain. It opened a sergeant position, so there's also an internal sergeant being promoted as well.
Thank you. Just before, seems like we're about to wrap up, but I just wanted to summarize that, you know, the report is very important to us and to the community. And having the data and being able to explain not only the data, but the thinking behind it is very, very important. And the folks in town really appreciate our public safety and always talk to me about the police department and the wonderful job that it is doing. But I do want to point out to folks that it's not inexpensive to provide this excellent level of service. And we are in a constrained budget situation now where we're using reserves to pay for our operational costs. And also looking at some of the recommendations, there are some significant potential costs, particularly I'm focused on the consolidation into one facility. And I think it's important, not only for the reasons that you mentioned, Chief, in terms of efficiency and better operations, I also think it's very important for emergency response to have our dispatchers and our emergency operations center in the same location. And so I just, I'm glad that it's moving along, and just to And so, I just, I'm glad that it's moving along. And just to confirm, you have done a walkthrough and Parks and Public Works is involved in the next step of the process. Is that correct?
Absolutely. We did this really hand-in-hand. And I have to thank PPW Director Nicole Burnham for really driving this. She assisted with the RFQ. We went through that together. We've met over there with the consultant, done the walkthrough of both buildings, and are moving forward on bringing that agreement back to council, I believe, at the beginning of October, most likely.
Great. I have a number of questions about that. I'll hold them till then.
Okay.
But thank you for the report. I don't see any others. So, thank you, Chief, and I will close this item.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next item is a land use item. It is a, an appeal of a decision by the Planning Commission. And before we get to the report and the appeal, I want to do disclosures. And are there any recusals? Councilmember Badami.
Thank you. I will be recusing myself, as my home is located within 1,000 feet of the subject property.
Okay, thank you. We'll call you back when this item's over. And are there any disclosures of council members? Vice Mayor?
I visited the site.
Okay. Councilmember Risto.
Thank you. I routinely, about once a week, walk past the site, and I bike by it. And then, I specifically, because of this issue, went out, visited it, walked around Charles and Los Gatos Boulevard, but I didn't speak with anybody.
Okay, thank you. And I did visit the site yesterday and met with the appellant, who oriented me toward the various locations on the property. And so, with that, let's go to the staff report. And then, the way this will work, since this is an appeal, the appellant will have, after the staff report, there may be some questions of staff. And then, the appellant will have five minutes. And then, the public will have three minutes each. And then, the appellant will have three minutes to respond. And then, we'll close the public portion and get into deliberations. So, go ahead, Mr. Mullin.
Great. Thank you, Mayor, and good evening. For your consideration tonight in this appeal of a Planning Commission decision denying an exception to defense regulations for a fence located at 10 Charles Street, the fence in question exceeds the allowable height and is partially located in the town's right-of-way. For background, following an administrative warning by the town for the existing fence, the property owner applied for the exception to the fence regulations in 2023. The town denied this request, and this decision was appealed to the Planning Commission. The commission then denied the appeal, a decision which the property owner has appealed and is the matter before you this evening. A detailed discussion on the background is included in your staff report. Pursuant to the town code, fences, walls, gates, and hedges may not exceed a height of three feet when located within a required front or street-side setback, traffic view area, or corner site triangle, unless an exception is granted by the town engineer and the community development director. This regulation is intended to minimize conflicts between pedestrians, cyclists, and cars by ensuring fences, walls, gates, and hedges do not obstruct the view from a car or of a car. The existing east, sorry, the existing five-foot, four-inch-tall fence is set at the property line and then turns east and enters the town's right-of-way, paralleling the curb along Charles Street. The property owner requested an exception based on safety and security concerns. Staff was unable to make the findings for granted the exception and denied the request. This decision was appealed to the Planning Commission, who was unable to make the findings to grant the appeal. The decision of the grant, of the Planning Commission was appealed to the council by the property owner, who indicated that there was an error or abuse of discretion by the commission, and that the decision of the commission is not supported by substantial evidence in the record. A discussion of these points is included in your staff report. In addition to the appeal materials, the property owner submitted a new plan that would reduce the height of the fence and shrubs along Los Gatos Boulevard and the first 30 feet of Charles Street to no more than three feet. Beyond 30 feet on Charles Street, the fence would remain at the current height, and the fence would remain in the right-of-way. The property owner has made it clear that they would be amenable to entering into a license agreement with the town to maintain the fence in the right-of-way. This information is new and was not considered by the Planning Commission. Staff recommends that the council uphold the decision of the Planning Commission to deny the exception request by adopting a resolution denying the appeal. Staff notes that a desk item was distributed ahead of tonight's meeting, and in addition to planning staff, Parks and Public Works staff is also in attendance tonight to further support your discussion. This concludes staff's presentation, and we are available to answer any questions.
Great. Are there any questions before we go to the appellant? Councilmember, any?
I had two questions from the staff report. The first one is, it looks like the citation was first given two and a half years ago, and it then took two years before it got to the Planning Commission. Why did it take so long? Why is there such a big gap there where we're sitting with this violation in place?
Thank you for that question. And I can ultimately let the appellant elaborate if they want to. There were some personal reasons outside of staff's control that delayed the process.
Okay. And then, my second question is, in the proposed changes that they've listed on page 128 or seven of nine, there's six bullets of what they're proposing, new information they could change. If that occurs, just to be clear, what is still in non-compliance?
Thank you for that question. What would remain out of compliance is the town, or the fence being located in the town's right-of-way. And the fence in that, that portion that would remain in the right-of-way would exceed three feet in height, which was, is well beyond the setback requirement on the street-side setback.
And so, if I could just follow up and understand, but that's on the Charles Street side, right? So, we're, since this is a corner house, do both sides have to be three feet then? Is that the ordinance?
Yes. Given the position of this house being on a corner and being rather narrow, it's burdened by street-side setbacks, traffic view areas, corner site triangles, and front setbacks. So, ultimately, the fencing on the property line along the street should not be any taller than three feet per town code.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Other questions, council? Okay. So, I've asked the appellant to come forward, and you will have five minutes. And then, we will move to the public.
Thank you so much. Before I start, can I address those two questions?
You can use your time to address whatever you'd like. You have five minutes.
Thank you so much. I want to quickly give, share the context and the rationale for why we are meeting today for this appeal. We did purchase the home in Feb. 2019 and rebuild the home and maintained the rich character and architecture of the home. We also took a lot of pain to build a beautiful fence with open lattes that would provide for visibility. In December 2000, and I'm trying to address your question right now, in December 2019, my wife was diagnosed of stage IV cancer. And obviously, it rattled us, it changed our lives. And when the citation or the one administrative warning came, I tried working very closely with Sean Mullin from Planning. But my focus 100% was on my wife's well-being. And in November 2023, we lost her. And I went through a long period of grieving, which was the main reason why the issue has taken so long. I want to share some facts. A large section of the fence along Charles Street was six feet tall and was exactly where it is. There are photographs on pages 278 to 281 to substantiate that. As soon as we received, the other issue is, as soon as we received the administrative warning, I made an application for fence site exception. And we had a member of the Public Works come and visit the site, made some detailed notes, and sent an internal email to the planning department saying that the engineering department recognizes that the fence was designed with open lattes to mitigate the fence's impact on the line of sight of traffic. It is my opinion that the height and open design of the proposed fence does not create a safety hazard at this location. Mind you, we're talking about the fence the way it is. I understand that opinions can change. But I just want to let you know that at that point, the Public Works or the engineering department had inspected the site and was okay with respect to safety and visibility. Of course, they then, they then understood, learned, and we learned at the same time that part of the fence was in the public right-of-way, which is why the appeal was denied. The other thing I want to bring to your attention is that active deliberations were conducted with the neighbors, and in some cases, even with the family members of the neighbors, to really see how we can address any and all concerns that they have with respect to safety and visibility, safety and visibility. There are two issues with respect to this matter. One is visibility and safety at the Los Gatos Boulevard Charles intersection. The other is the part of the fence being in the public right-of-way. There is a third issue, of course, but unfortunately, the town code does not provide for that, for any relief on that. And that is the privacy and security that we are concerned about as owners on a lot in that location. Both these issues were deliberated in the Planning Commission meeting. And the chairwoman, Thomas, made a strong argument that the appeal should be granted partially because there was a clear understanding that the right-of-way was not a concern to the town based on the town attorney, based on the license agreement. We do feel that the Planning Commission did err. It wasn't an error of abuse, but it was an error of judgment by not allowing us to have a partial or a conditional approval with very stringent conditions that any and all concerns with respect to safety at the intersection have to be addressed. No questions. And we were willing to take that. We were willing to, we were willing to do whatever was needed to address the safety concern. The other thing that I want to bring to your notice is that we really had two options, and that is to completely take the fence back and lose 55% of the front yard, or to lower the fence to three feet in the entire front of the, of, front of the property. And that's the plan that we have proposed. So, there is new information, which is another reason why we feel the appeal should be, should be heard and end. That's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. If you could just stay in case there's any questions. I do have a question, and I'm wondering if it's possible to put up the diagram, the most recent diagram. I can't even read the page number.
I think it's 375.
375. That has the red outline and the other outlines. I do have a question about that. Is it possible to put that up? Is it possible to put that up? Okay, great. We'll just hold for a minute while that's coming up.
Sure.
property. And if you could, sir, explain, what is your latest request? I understand in the staff report, there are now several items that you are willing to do that were not presented to the Planning Commission. If you could tell us what those are and where they are on this diagram, that would be very helpful.
Okay, sure. And I might take Sean's help on this, because Sean and I have had extensive discussions, as well as Gary. But what we are proposing, and it's not something that I'm thrilled with because it does concern, it genuinely, it strongly concerns me about the privacy and the security, especially when we bought this home with the idea of the grandkids growing up and spending a lot of time in the front yard. But everything that you see in triangle A, trapezium B, trapezium C, and triangle D, everything in that, in those four spaces would be no fence at all over three feet. The two options that we really have is to either pull back the fence.
You can take the microphone with you. You can remove it out of the holder and take it with you.
Sure. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks. So, the two options that we really have, and it's like Hobson's choice, we either bring all the fence back to this line, and I've done the calculation, I think it's on page 286, we lose 55% of the front yard and essentially kill the front yard. The other option is to basically, what we proposed, and it's all over here, that there is no fence over three feet, over 36 inches, in any of the areas A, B, C, and D. We also make sure that there are no shrubs over three feet, and there are no new trees over three feet or seven and a half feet, whatever the code is. There are old trees that are there from times immemorial, and obviously, those would be retained.
Okay, thank you. And I think in the staff report, it refers to the triangle A, but I, I'm not sure it was clear on the area marked C in the staff report. And so, I'll be going back to this diagram then. But what you're saying is that in that area C, there will be no fence higher than three feet under your current proposal. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. The fence that's over three feet will only start at this point, and that would be the existing fence.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Then, I will go to questions. Are there any questions of staff before I go to public comment? Vice Mayor?
Thank you. So, I wanted to ask about the fence across the street at 302 Los Gatos Boulevard. Is that?
Sir, you can sit down. We will ask questions of staff, and you will have another opportunity of three minutes later. Thank you.
Is that fence non-compliant?
Thank you for that question. It clarifies that the green fence.
The green fence, yeah.
So, it's, it wouldn't meet today's code, but that fence existed prior to the passage of the fence regulation amendments in 2018, 2019. And the code specifically calls out that existing, what become non-conforming fences can be maintained and repaired in place. So, it's not compliant, but it's legal non-conforming.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. No other questions? Yes, Councilmember Risto.
Thank you. I do have a question related to that. I, you know, I remember all of this about the fence, and I understand the height, and, you know, part of it is pedestrian friendliness, and for sure, sightlines and visibility. So, when we have non-compliant fences, non-compliant fences that were put in place prior to our fence ordinance update, I hear you saying they can be repaired. If the whole fence blew down, or if someone came in and tore the fence down and wanted to put a new fence in, what are their options?
Thank you for that question. The town code would allow them to replace it in kind, as long as it didn't get The town code would allow them to replace it in kind as long as it didn't get taller or less open.
So.
In the same location, same height, same design, essentially.
So they wouldn't have to comply with the new three-foot ordinance?
They would be complying with the town code, that they would not have to comply with the three-foot.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any other questions for staff. So Kevin Chesney and then Doug Alcott.
Good evening. Sorry. Good evening. My name is Kevin Chesney, and I live at two Charles Street as a thirty-year resident directly adjacent to the property in question. I'm here tonight to urge you to uphold the planning commission's five-to-one decision and deny the appeal. We can all appreciate the desire to build and create a beautiful home and secure home. However, they cannot come at the expense of public safety, the established visual standards of our community, and the rule of law. This issue has dragged out for nearly three years, ever since my neighbor Kent Anderson and I first raised our safety concerns with the owner as he was building the fence in the fall of twenty twenty-two. The core problems remain unchanged. This is not just a simple fence dispute. It is a matter of public safety, the established visual standards of our community, and the rule of law. The issue has dragged, after multiple hearings and extensive testimony, the planning commission saw these violations clearly and voted decisively to deny the exception. The applicant's claims of broad neighborhood support are simply not accurate. And while I may be the only one speaking out tonight against it, the public record is clear. Multiple residents have consistently voiced concerns. I am here tonight to echo those concerns and to specifically highlight the illegal seizure, seizure of public property, a violation that many residents may not be aware of, but one that affects our entire community. The fence is a double violation. It encroaches the public right-of-way for about eighty feet and into it as much as six feet. And, you know, the fencing also exceeds the three-foot height limit required for corner lots. We're on a street so narrow that we're already paid more for smaller garbage trucks, so these are not minor infringements. It is an effective privatization of essential public land and space that belongs to every resident of Los, Los Gatos, not just one homeowner. It sends the message that our zoning laws are merely suggestions that a public property can be claimed by those who simply built first and asked for forgiveness later. The planning commission staff have done their jobs. They have correctly identified this fence as a safety hazard and illegal encroachment. Please support their work, uphold the law, and protect our community by denying this appeal. Thank you.
Any questions? Councilmember Aristo.
Thank you. I do have a question because you live on Charles Street. When you're coming out, does this new fence present sightline issues on, for the sidewalk or the street?
The fence there, yes. Kent and I immediately objected, and we have to actually go out into the crosswalk, and, you know, there was one of our neighbors that had an accident with the prior fence. It's, it's very, very danger, dangerous, and both of us spoke out at it, you know, and raised these concerns to the planning commission about how unsafe it is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I do have a question, and I'm wondering if it's possible to put back page three seventy-five up on the screen? Thank you. So with the most recent information that came after the appeal was filed, the appellant says, now says that they're willing to do less than three feet height.
They actually.
Let me, let me just get to my question, please.
Sure, please.
So I understand you have two objections, one to using the public right-of-way and another to the safety issues presented by the fence. So with regard to the less than three feet, as they've indicated in A, B, and C on this diagram, do you still have the same public safety issues that you raised?
According to the visibility triangle, if it's at three feet and the shrubs are cut down, then you do not have.
You, you can take the mic, microphone and go over if you'd like, just because.
You, you don't have the visibility. Now, they did talk about an issue, you know, because there is no, that, that particular part is very narrow right there. It's actually, there's no sidewalk. And, and so as a pedestrian, if you're walking around, you know, you don't have anywhere to go other than in the curb and could be hit.
Right.
It's a pretty unsafe, I mean, it's a very, very busy intersection. It's incredibly unsafe for the way the fence is right now.
I understand.
And even when they talked, we talked about this lowering to three feet, they actually considered that as part of it when they had this discussion. So I don't understand why you're saying it's new.
Okay, thank you. We'll go over that with staff to, to verify that. Thank, thank you very much.
So I'm Doug Alcott, and I live at three hundred Charles, at the very end of this section of Charles Street in question here, and have been a longtime resident of it since nineteen I initially supported Fruze's appeals to the planning department, commission to accept the fence as he originally constructed it because the majority of people I spoke to didn't feel there was a safety or visibility issue with the intersection. And I have changed my mind on that, but majority of people, including members of my own family, my son and his family are renting a house just two blocks down the boulevard in the direction of the high school on the same side of the street as Fruze's, and they walk to, or drive to our house all the time. And we have a caretaker who comes from Campbell twice a week to help take care of my wife who has disability problems, and she's never complained about entering Charles Street with the fence as it is. And, but I acknowledge Kevin's concerns here, and so I am in favor of adoption of this new plan that he himself is proposing, to reduce the height of the fence to three feet or less along the boulevard and at the corners, one to the south, which is the entrance to a driveway of a property named, a property owned by Michelle Huntley, and she had complained about visibility there, trying to back out into the busy street. Okay? And so to have a corner in that fence cut and, and the height of the fence reduced would be very, very helpful to her. And on the other side, to have another corner cut to increase the visibility coming in and out. I myself have never had problems coming in and out of, out of the driveway, but I, I acknowledge that there is that potential danger. So I would, I would advise you to reject the, the current appeal to the planning department for, for an exception here. I don't think an exception is, is warranted, and I'm hoping that members of the council will have a chance to study this new plan, which Fruze himself proposed and which was reviewed by Sean Mullen and his staff, did a very good job of diagramming it for us. I do have an issue with this issue of, of the fence being in the right-of-way in, on Charles Street. It's not quite clear to me what, from the diagram, what that entails. And because the, the fence, as it comes down Charles, remains inside the curb, and yes, it could be moved farther away from the curb, and that's one of the options that.
Thank you. If I could just ask.
Yes.
The, you to expand on your concern or your opinion about the fence being in the right-of-way on Charles. What is, what is your opinion about it?
Well, to me, it, it isn't where it currently, currently is located. To me, it doesn't seem to me to be a violation of, of the right-of-way. As long as it's within the curb, the curb has a bulge in it because there's a big tree there, which they decided not to remove to straighten the curb. And also, past, he, he, he will be allowed to reduce the height, or to keep the height of the fence beyond thirty feet from the intersection. And I feel that's important to him for his right to privacy there. He has a large backyard, and I feel that, that, that would really be necessary for him to have that privacy in his backyard.
Okay, thank you.
You're safe. Go.
Any other questions? Okay. That's the only card I have. Is there anyone online who would like to speak on this?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. And now we will go back to the appellant. If you would like to come back up, sir, and you have three minutes, if you want to address either any other information or the comments that have been made here, it's your time to use as you like.
I just want to, thank you so much, Chairman. I just wanted to speak a little about Zubi, my wife, and my involvement with having deliberations with the neighbors, and every place we have lived in, in every country, we've literally left that place with a trail of goodwill and lifelong relationships with the neighbors. So I obviously have taken this a little personally when I'm told that we did not reach out to neighbors. If I can request Sean to pull up the document which is on binders and if the time can be put on hold.
Is it a document that's part of the packet?
Yeah, it was sent to Sean.
What page is that?
No, it's a document that was emailed to Sean.
Through the mayor, the clerk has this available, is pulling it up now.
Okay, thank you.
And we're putting hold on the time? It's a document that says binders, binder letters.
Okay. Time while we're finding the document, if we could.
Can you let me know which one it is?
Yeah, it says binder. Okay. Why don't I just read it? Okay, that's, that's some of them, but why don't I just read it? Because I've got it printed out.
That's fine. You, you can just read from that.
Right, right.
Let's make sure that he has another ten seconds.
Thank you. The neighbor across the street, Ken Anderson, three zero two, he's already left the, he's already sold his home, and the new owner is Rajib, Rajib Imran, and I discussed this plan with him in detail. I sent him an email. He sent an email to Sean, and I'll just read an excerpt from him. He says, after reviewing the proposal, I understand that the, he says, although I feel that the three-foot height may be too low in terms of privacy and safety, I respect the process, and if this proposal is deemed to be best interest of the community, I have no objections and no concerns from my side. Obviously, we had Mr. Doug Alcott who spoke, and he also testified that the new plan, I believe, completely satisfies the visibility and safety issues at the intersection of Charles Street and Los Gatos Boulevard. We have another gentleman, another neighbor, Said, he unfortunately was not able to make it today, but he has extensive correspondence with the town, and he also says, I believe the visibility issue should be resolved once the designated areas A, B, C, and D fence height is reduced to three feet, as it describes in the proposal. The neighbor on the left, which is Michelle Huntley, she said, the current plan for the fence line on Los Gatos Boulevard and extending around the property line on the south side of the parcel being thirty-six inches, which falls in line with the town code, I no longer have any objections with that portion of the fence. And since I have another thirty seconds, this is a letter from, this is a testimony of Kevin Chesney, where he says, we talked about a couple of changes, either move the fence back, which other neighbors have done, or bring it down. I am totally fine. We talked about the changes, and if he can make those changes, I'm totally fine. He needs to move it back two to four feet, or he needs to drop some of those things down. Kevin and I have had detailed discussions, and he said, as long as you move two or three sections on, on each corner, I'm totally fine.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Are there any que, yes, Vice Mayor has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just a quick question. So looking at the document that you, we were referencing earlier, three seventy-five, A, B, C, and D, so I'm having a little bit of a hard time visualizing this. You're saying you will drop the existing fence down to three feet on all four of those areas?
Everything.
And then when you get to the yellow part, keep it?
Yes.
Okay.
Put that up again, just so the public understands what we're talking about, page
Can I say something while we are waiting?
Sure.
There's one of the neighbors that.
Which is responsive to that question, yeah.
Yeah, there's one other neighbor who has not sent a letter. Jenna and David, I spoke with them multiple times. They said, we're totally fine, but we don't want to put anything in writing because there is another neighbor who's asking us to, to, to speak against it.
Okay. So we just want to respond to this question.
Sorry.
Yeah. Vice Mayor, I'm, I'm sorry, would you mind repeating?
Sure. So, so to be clear, all of the red that's bordering the street will be dropped down to three feet. When you get to the yellow part, you'll keep the existing fence.
That's correct. That's correct. So this fence, which is right now six feet, will go down to three feet, 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 and this will continue as is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any other questions, so we will close the public hearing and go back to questions of staff if council members have any further questions. Councilmember Aristo.
Thank you. I do have a question about, you know, I mean, these kind of things come up a lot. What do we do when we determine typically that a fence is in the public right-of-way?
I can turn to the town engineer to address that question.
Yes. So let me ask a question to answer the question. Are we talking about a fence that's built in the right-of-way or a fence that's identified as being in the right-of-way at, you know, after it's been built?
Well, I guess to start, was the old fence on this property already in the public right-of-way and a fence was built, or like, did this fence newly get built in the public right-of-way?
So I'd have to go back to the history. Mr. Mullen with some support there.
What I can offer is there was an existing fence. We don't have a survey on file showing that fence. It's unclear whether the existing fence down, farther down Charles was in the right-of-way or not. It's clear that portions of the new fence, especially as you get closer to Los Gatos Boulevard, of the new fence where no fence existed is in the right-of-way.
Okay, so let's deal with that part. So now we've got a brand-new fence that's put in, and it's in the public right-of-way. This can't be the first time this has happened.
No, it's not. So typically, we get two situations. We get a request to put something in the public right-of-way. We typically say that that's not permitted without special circumstance. We have had situations where the commission has, a planning commission has accepted those and approved those. Those are then followed with a license agreement, typically to allow things to be put in the right-of-way, temporary structures, not permanent structures, nothing concrete, no brick, no anything with heavy foundations. A fence is, I would consider, a temporary structure. Any license agreement that we do and have executed does have language. It says, if and when the town needs use of that public right-of-way, the property owner is responsible for moving that fence at their cost, at the request of the town.
Okay, thank you. Because I know, for example, on Shannon Road, when we're putting in the sidewalks, curb and gutter, and we discovered that there were quite a few homeowner improvements, including fences, in the public right-of-way, and that created a lot of heartburn. So this is something that I'm very concerned about going forward, avoiding.
That's correct, yes. For the Shannon Road situation, there were improvements that had been done. The, the property line was. The property line wasn't clearly identified, because there wasn't really a curbed face along there, and folks had moved improvements along Shannon out, landscaping, for instance, out into the public right-of-way. That did impact our need to, or our ability to construct those improvements out there, including the sidewalk. We did those improvements back all the way to the property line, and in a lot of cases, you're correct, we did have to remove some of the improvements that had been put in by the property owners.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Other questions? So I had a question really about the process, and so I know that the council has several options in front of it, including upholding the appeal, and if it were to include new information, our process says that we should remand it back to the planning commission. Is that correct?
That's correct pursuant to section 29.20.295.
Okay. The question I had is, is it really a planning commission matter? If the decision here is not to exceed the height limitations within the front yard and street-side setbacks, eliminating the safety issue, but to allow the location in the right-of-way, is it necessary to uphold the appeal and send this back to the planning commission?
I think that's a good question, and the point of clarification I would add is, even the portion of the fence that would remain that's out of those important traffic view areas towards the front of the property is still in an area that is regulated to no more than three feet, and that's another traffic view area or a street-side setback. So unfortunately, along this lot, the entire Los Catos Boulevard and the entire Charles Street frontage of this property, the maximum fence height is three feet until you get pretty far into the property, and it's pretty narrow.
So the appellant has indicated a willingness to reduce everything in the front to three feet.
That's correct. In the front, and when we had that diagram up, that was all the areas in red. Down Charles, the fence would remain at its current height, and there's some diagrams in the plans, sorry, in your packet today that show that.
And that seems to be replacing an existing fence, based on the photographs that I saw were part of the packet. Is it necessary to send this back to the planning commission to deal with that fence height issue over there? I'm just trying to work on the process here a little bit.
I think that's, it's fair. I think a strict reading of the code, without having confirmation that there, confirmation, I would look for a survey or some sort of other plan evidence, that there was a fence in that location along Charles that was in the right-of-way, that portion still requires an exception and a license agreement. So while the plan that the appellant has brought forth remedies much of the safety concern, there still is an exception generated by the location and the height of the fence farther down on Charles.
Okay. And then just to follow up, I think that exception, minor exceptions may be made at the staff level, not necessarily going to the planning commission level. Would that be considered a minor exception? And I'm not talking about the front on the boulevard that's lower to three feet, I'm talking about the side fence that seems to follow the path of the existing, of the original fence.
And I would clarify as well that none of these require planning commission review. These are all reviewed by the town engineer and the community development director, and that's where the first decision is made. This was opined on by the planning commission because it was appealed, the original denial was appealed. So typically, the planning commission and the council are not involved until we get into appeals.
Okay, thank you. I think I might have a couple other questions. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just to sort of put a finer point on your question, the town council this evening could grant the exception and ask staff to create a license agreement and be done with this, correct?
I think the staff report and myself have opined on what the town code says. I would look to the town attorney to opine on whether they have, the council has that authority.
Thank you.
Hi. Okay, so if we're looking at what's governing the council's decision here, we're looking at section 29.20.295, and basically what the standard is, is that the appellant bears the burden of proof to show that there was an error or an abuse of discretion by the planning commission. If neither is proved, the appeal shall be denied. If the appellant does meet the burden, the council shall grant the appeal and may modify in whole or in part the determination on appeal. Does that help?
Sure. So if we can, if we can determine, well, so is there not a part of our code that, and I don't expect you to be an expert on our code, but is there not a part of our code about new information?
I can start. That section, which I lost my notes, but that section is particular on the new information, that if the council wants to grant the appeal in part or wholly based on new information, then it should be remanded back to the planning commission through granting of the appeal so that the planning commission can consider the new information and render a new decision.
Okay. So if, so if we want to make a final decision this evening, we have to find that the planning commission aired or abused their power? Yeah.
That is what's in the code, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Aristo.
Okay, so the other way is if we deny the appeal, then, so if we deny the appeal, what are the next steps? Then the applicant goes back to staff and has to talk about the fence all over again, and staff can make decisions about whether they want to figure out what to do with the right-of-way, and now that we've addressed safety at three feet, and it goes back to staff, and if staff makes a decision that works with the applicant, then it just is done, correct?
If, if the appeal's denied, then the code case would continue, and the fence would need to be remedied to meet the strict law of the town code. So it would need to be reduced to three feet and moved on to the applicant's property.
Okay, three feet all the way, and, okay. Okay.
Okay. Councilmember Rennie?
So the question we're really talking about, and we've done this several times before, the language says we, if there's new information, which there's quite a bit of it, right, we should send it back to planning commission, but we don't always do that. We don't, you know, if you think in terms of creating the process, too much process to send it back to the planning commission. We have, in other cases, I don't remember whether we grant the appeal or deny the appeal, but then allow the project to be gone forward with, you know, the, how we specify. And then I would add my own opinion on top of that is, again, we've got a fence that's been in dangerous violation for two and a half years. I'm concerned about lengthening the process some more, right? If we, if we today say, yes, go change the fence to the three feet as indicated in the red zone and everything else is okay, then that can happen right away. If we say, send it back to the planning commission, now we wait for their date, and, you know, it just prolongs an already dangerous situation. So if that's the direction we want to go, I'm tending to not want to have to send it back to the planning commission, because we've got a safety issue that we need to take care of faster. Thanks.
Yeah, I would agree with Councilmember Rennie on this. I was on the planning commission when we put in place the new process for reviewing this, and it went to the council, and there was a concern that if we didn't send things back to the planning commission when new information was presented, applicants and appellants would just skip the planning commission. They would wait until they got to the council and look for a decision, and we would have an ineffective planning commission, and that was the primary reason. I don't think this is the case here. I think that our planning commission has, has really worked with the information that they have, and that the, the appellant has been forthcoming, and I think there were some mix-ups with instructions, frankly, that he got from staff going back over two years ago. And so I don't think that this is the case where sending it back to the planning commission enforces the intent of what that was when it was put in place. The other thing is, I was on the planning commission when we developed the new fence ordinance. Quite a bit of time was spent talking about fences that exist in, existing fences in public right-of-way, and there are some significant ones, just a few feet north on the boulevard that are similar and were ones that we wanted to make sure that it was okay to allow those fences in the right-of-way, where it made sense, where there was judgment applied to it, and to be able to do that. We're not a town that's laid out on a complete grid where it's easy to do these things, and we have a number of streets. Los Catos Boulevard was eventual, it was originally not called that, it was San Jose Road, and it was a dirt road, and it evolved, and at one time, there was also a railway that went there. So on our, you know, our properties are sometimes have irregular boundaries, and so sometimes it's important for public safety to allow fences into the public space, and this is certainly one of those that, that makes sense in my mind. So, and Councilmember Rennie, Councilmember Rennie's point about prolonging the process and continuing a situation which is not in the interest of public safety, when there is a solution at hand proposed by the appellant to lower the fence to three feet, seems to make sense to move forward in that, in that way. That's just my opinion, and other council members may have other thoughts, too. Vice Mayor?
No, thank you for that. I agree completely with everything that the both of you said. So I guess the question is, what does a motion look like?
Through the mayor?
Yes, thank you. So in the staff report on page eight of nine, the second alternative is to provide direction to staff to prepare a resolution granting the appeal and approving the application.
To make a motion along those lines? Oh, sorry?
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay.
So-
Hold on. Councilmember Aristo, do you have a comment?
Yeah, may I ask a quick question? Because if the alternative is to, to grant the appeal and go with the application, the application has changed. So would the motion have to include what the changes are? Because we're talking about something different than what was denied. So it's going to be a little more information than that, correct?
So the, the motion could include direction to staff on things like, per the changes that are included in specific exhibits, timeframe on remedy to get the fence to meet those changes?
One more.
Yes, Town Manager?
I was hesitant to jump into the middle of the conversation, but it seems like when we get to development projects and appeals, we go really down a rabbit hole. We need to take a step way back. The council took a position and approved an ordinance in August of 2019, approving a fence ordinance. In their thoughtfulness of passing that fence ordinance, you grandfathered in all the houses that were not compliant with that new code. And in that new code, decided to make the only exceptions being five categories that could be granted by the community development director, of which I don't believe apply here. And so on the one hand, you have a question of a policy where, where a homeowner has renovated their home, then built a fence several years after the passage of that law, was cited quickly, pretty imminently after starting that construction and building it. It's now dragged on two and a half years. So this isn't something that's now been there for a long time and now we're grappling with. This is something that was identified and cited a while ago. So you have a policy question before you that if you grant an appeal to allow a fence in violation of the code, the question that your manager's going to ask of you, because we want to be consistent on how we treat all our residents, how do you want me to treat other fence violations that were constructed subsequent to August of 2000, or, I should say, September 2019, when the ordinance went into effect? So that's a question we're really going to have to grapple with, that I don't think we're grappling with today. It's something we want to, may bring back for a conversation. In regards to this one, that does apply. Secondly, there was discussions about a licensing agreement to allow a fence to be put in the public right-of-way, and that staff were open to the willingness to do so in the conversations of the planning commission. This only came to my knowledge when I was reading the staff report for this meeting. I am not open to doing a licensing agreement before having an internal conversation with staff about how are we approaching construction within the public right-of-way consistently in granting those license agreements, and what does that licensing agreement need to look like? Now on the heels of a new court decision that came out in May of 2025, where liability that statutorily ours cannot be transferred by agreement to a private property owner. And so I would really want to work through those issues with the town attorney and staff and come up with the right approach coming forward that we can consistently apply to all before we go forth. So my recommendation on this one is to deny the appeal and let staff work through the issue with regards to this fence.
Councilmembers, yes, Councilmember Aristo.
Thank you. I have one more question. Given that the front yard, and especially the sightlines at the corner, like the driveway and the street, are safety issues and visibility issues, the side yard is an ordinance that we have that I think is more about being pedestrian-friendly and, you know, not having walls along houses. The question I have is, what is the restriction on foliage height if the fence is three feet all the way around the property?
I can start, and Town Engineer may need to jump in, but the, the fence ordinance is actually fence, walls, hedges, and it includes foliage. So the foliage in those areas is also limited to three feet. Where my gap is, a tree is obviously taller than three feet. It would need to be limbed up to seven feet?
Seven and a half feet.
Seven and a half feet. So you end up with a sort of a vertical view corridor in those areas if you do have foliage.
Okay, thank you. I think what I'd like to do now is to take a recess, and if one of the council members would like to come forward with a motion, we can consider that after the recess, given the information that we've been provided by staff. So I will ask that we get back here at 9:20. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, Rob's there. Okay, thank you. We're now back in session. Considering item 12 and having thought about this a little bit. I think there is a way forward to address the safety concern and the visibility concern at the front of the property along the lines of what the applicant, the appellant has proposed. But the question is the process and how we address the full set of issues that are here, including the fence and the public right of way. So with that, I would like to make a motion to deny the appeal based on the not being able to find an error or abuse on the part of the planning commission of the information that they had when they considered it. But I would also like, when we're done with this, for staff to explain what the path forward is for the appellant and for resolving the public right-of-way issue. So the motion is simple, to adopt a resolution denying an appeal of a planning commission decision to deny a fence height exception request for an existing fence partially located in the town's right-of-way and exceeding the height limitations within the front yard and street-side yard setbacks on property zoned R1D located at 10 Charles Street. Councilmember Risto.
Thank you. I will second the motion for the same reasons.
Okay, so I will ask staff at this point to provide some information on what they see as a path forward for resolving this. Should this motion carry?
Thank you. I can start and other staff members may be able to jump into support. The applicant or appellant has expressed willingness to remedy the fence as provided in Exhibit 15 in the locations along Los Gatos Boulevard and near Charles Street to reduce the height to no more than three feet. That portion of fence would meet code and doesn't require granting an exception. So staff will work with the applicant through the code violation process to get that taken care of as soon as possible to eliminate the safety issues along the corner and for the neighbor's driveway to the south. The portions of the fence in question that are in the right-of-way is something that would need to be further discussed at the staff level, given some of the information presented this evening and including the applicant or the appellant in that conversation.
Okay, and a question, would the burden be on the homeowner to provide any evidence about the right-of-way issue?
The, yes, if another exception request is required or if the right-of-way issue is worked through the staff level, the burden's on the homeowner to provide the evidence and information needed to justify.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. This doesn't necessarily have to be part of the motion, but I would just like to provide a friendly amendment or friendly direction that as we're having these conversations at the staff level about the right-of-way, I think we should also think about our fence policy because the council has now seen several of these appeals, which I don't think is usual, you know, for municipalities, their governing bodies to be spending this much time on fences. And so I don't know what the answer is. Clearly, it's a complicated issue, but I think it's worth staff thinking about how to modify the policies so we don't keep ending up in the situation.
So I would agree that I think we need to do some more work on the fence policy. It was done, I think, in a thoughtful way that considered a number of issues relating to wildlife and the ability for wildlife to move through various properties. And there were quite a few things that were encompassed in that change. I don't think it needs to be part of the motion, though I think staff is willing to move on that. Is that correct? Okay, thank you. Councilmember Risto.
Thank you. This is not part of the motion, but I think also, moving on, I would want either the planning commissioner or planning department to kind of look at, while we're looking at the fence policy, I'd also like to look at the larger issue of encroachment across town and how we address that because I think that will come back to us if and when we want to start adding sidewalks places or whenever the town wants to touch property. How are we dealing with encroachment and how will we do that going forward?
Thank you. Councilmember Rennie.
Thank you, Mayor. So I guess, again, the way staff described it, we're going to correct the safety issue right away. I'm just want to make sure that we don't get bogged down in trying to figure out how to correct, you know, the encroachment issue, which is could be tear the fence down. And then there's a long discussion on that and we aren't doing the work on the front of the front part because we might be tearing the fence down in the future, but we haven't figured out exactly what that is. Again, I want to see this, the safety part addressed as soon as possible and just if staff could again confirm that we will be able to go after that immediately.
It's the intent of staff to immediately address the safety issues along Los Gatos Boulevard in the corner and very quickly have, start the conversations about the remaining portions of the fence.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other questions or comments, so I would ask for a roll call on this, please.
Councilmember Risto?
Aye.
Councilmember Rennie? Councilmember Rennie, we didn't hear your vote.
I said aye. Did you miss it?
Vice Mayor Moore?
Yeah, aye.
Mayor Hudes?
Aye. Okay, so with that, we will close this item and thank the public for their participation. And as I said earlier, I think there is a path forward to get this resolved and I think we found a process that'll work. So thank you very much. We will now welcome back Councilmember Badami and we'll move on to item number 13.
Good evening, council. In May, when you're having your budget discussions, you set aside $155,000 for community grants and you said you're going to come back and you figure out how to divide that up in August. And it's August, so here we are with community grants again. I've got a framework for you of five questions and hopefully by going through those five questions, we can narrow down what you want to do to divide up those funds and allocate them out. The first question that we have for you there has to do with sustaining grants. In your staff report, you've got a list of the sustaining grants as we proposed them in the study session in April. I haven't changed anything. It's the same, the same list that you saw in April there. And so the question that you have first is, are you okay with that list as being the sustaining grants? Are you moving forward with that? Or would you want to make any changes to that? Do you want to add anything there? Bump some numbers around, move some things, add some organizations, drop some organizations? Do you want to make any changes there? So that's just the first question. On that list, you will not see the money that was discussed for a laundry service, which popped up during your discussion on May, actually, the May 20 meeting. That wasn't actually put into a motion, so we didn't actually add it here. So just as a heads up, it's not on the list for that particular reason. The second question is, if you have any money left over that you didn't allocate to sustaining grants, do you want to make that extra money available as competitive grants? And this is just a yes or no question, if you want to do that or not. If the answer is no, you don't want to do that, you can skip question three. If the answer is yes, you do want to have some competitive grants, then there are three or four different little things we could do that would just be considerations to add to the stipulations for the community, for the competitive grant program that may reduce the number of applications, may reduce the number of staff hours that we put into that. Moving on from there would be question number four. And again, if you say, no, we're not going to do competitive grants, this one doesn't apply as much. But if you do want to do competitive grants, if you could just clarify what the makeup of the grant readers, what would you like that to be? Is that you want one from DEI, one commissioner from arts, two from community health senior service, what would you like the makeup, just clarify for that for me would be great? And then the fifth question, and that's my favorite question, is whatever you come up with tonight, whatever you've, 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 you work it out and you've put it together, can we commit to doing that for the next maybe three or four or five years? And every year I can just pencil it straight into the budget without bringing it back to you every single year for the same discussion. And I have, I have faith in you. I know we can get there. So I'm just putting that out. Again, we'll go in any direction that you choose and I'm here to support you with any of that and I am open for questions.
Okay, are there any clarifying questions before we dive in? Because I do have a number of members of the public who'd like to speak about specifics on the grant program. So are there any opening questions that council members have? Okay, thank you. Then I will go to public comment and I have Ed Lozewicki, Sue Amadine, and then Tim O'Rourke. And then I have a couple others, too.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. My name is Ed Lozewicki. I'm a 40-year resident of Los Gatos, raised my family here and appeared before you at the May 20 meeting to discuss the request of St. Vincent de Paul for another grant during the new fiscal year for what we call the Laundry Voucher Program. What happened at the May 20 meeting, I believe, is that there was a discussion of many different sustaining grants such as the pantry at St. Luke's Church, the shower program at the Methodist Church. And there was some discussion, although, to be honest, I wasn't there for the discussion of the Laundry Voucher Program, but according to the report, it was discussed, but there was no vote taken as to whether or not that would be put into sustaining grant status. So I'm here to ask you to consider putting the Laundry Voucher Program, consider it as a sustaining grant rather than a competitive grant. The way these vouchers work is that St. Vincent de Paul Society, which I'm a member, distributes what we call vouchers. And what they are, these little business card-type forms, which I would ask the clerk to pass me on. We distribute those at the Methodist Church every Thursday to people who come to have the showers that are provided for unhoused residents of the town. The vouchers are then taken to a laundromat down on Santa Cruz Avenue, which we have made an arrangement with, for laundry service. They turn in the voucher, they get a bunch of coins to operate the machines. The unhoused residents then wash their laundry, wash their blankets, their sleeping bags, and collect them themselves. And the laundromat keeps track of all the vouchers. St. Vincent de Paul then comes around once a month and reimburses them for the cost of the laundering. There's no markup. It's a straight cost pass-through on the part of the laundromat for which we thank them very much. They're very generous. Last year, in the '24-'25 fiscal year, we served 25 unhoused residents multiple times for the laundry service that they got at the laundromat. The council was, I want to point out that many of those folks are seniors, many of them have disabilities, live on the street or in encampments or in their vehicles. So they really rely on this laundromat service to get their clothes cleaned. The council kindly gave us $4,000. We got $4,000 last year. We now think it should be more like $2,500 because we didn't use the whole grant last year. So our ask is, please consider the voucher program for sustaining grant categorization.
Okay, and the question is, is that in the amount of $2,500?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for the work on this. It's very important for our residents and the collaboration with the laundromat is just incredible. I know we had some words to say about the owner there as well. It's really a service that's very much appreciated.
And thank you for that, Mayor.
Okay, next card I have is Sue Amadine.
I'm Sue Amadine, current president of St. Vincent de Paul out of St. Mary's, Los Gatos. Yes, we spent $2,500 on vouchers. We returned money to Mr. Baker and the team because it was a mild winter, so they didn't have as much need to refresh their sleeping bags and clothing and all that. So we thank you for that. We thank you for the commendation to the Nguyen family at Los Gatos Laundry. They've been doing this service for decades. So we all appreciate the service of giving laundry services to our unhoused. Another important point about this service at United Methodist's showers and St. Vincent de Paul being there every week, giving out vouchers, is other needs are presented. Our unhoused residents sleep in their cars or they're living rough in their tents. And they come to those showers with other needs, medical needs, their car's broken down, they need gas, things get stolen and lost, they need IDs, they need new tents and sleeping bags. And all those needs are addressed. It's case management. It's boots on the ground right there. And they come because of the laundry vouchers and they come because of the showers. So it's a catch-all. It's a real huge service that's being done. And I wanted to point out one thing that happened in June. An unhoused gentleman, long-term resident here, had hip surgery. Kaiser released him. He needed PT, as you always do. They wouldn't give it to him because he lives in his car. So the town, St. Luke's and St. Vincent de Paul, put him up in one of our partner hotels and he received the physical therapy he needed. So we thank you for the last year's voucher grant we received. We thank you for the commendation. Meant a lot to those humble folks at Los Gatos Laundry. And we do ask if you could consider a sustaining grant for the laundry vouchers because it serves such a larger even purpose than just cleaning laundry. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tim O'Rourke, and then last thing.
Good evening, members of the town council. My name is Tim O'Rourke. I'm a resident of Los Gatos and a member of St. Vincent de Paul. The town of Los Gatos has provided, has prided itself on its compassion and community spirit we've shown this time and again by supporting local initiatives and helping those in need. Tonight, I ask that we extend that spirit by moving the laundry program funding from the competitive grant into the sustaining grants. Access to clean clothes is about so much more than hijing. It's about human dignity. This is a practical investment in our community. A person with clean clothes is more likely to be successful in a job interview. A person with clean clothes feels more confident, is more likely to seek out other essential services like healthcare and housing assistance. By providing one simple service, we are giving our unhoused neighbors a vital tool to help them regain their footing and move towards self-sufficiency. This isn't about enabling, it's about empowering. It's a small tangible step that can have a profound impact on an individual's life and in turn on the health and well-being of the entire community. It would send a powerful message that Los Gatos cares about the dignity of every single person who calls this town home. So thank you for your time and your consideration. I urge your support to include the $2,500 laundry funding to be moved from competitive grants to sustaining grants. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Last thing?
Mayor, council? Last thing? That was the first thing, too. As you remember, Cat in the Hat, I'm here for the same old thing, to support the two, you don't have this in the budget, anything for Super Bowl, March Madness, or World Cup. It's coming. It's my Project 2026. We need a grant for it. I've spoken briefly with Mary, because Santa Clara doesn't have a hometown thing. Base in 1994, there was, I've spoken about it, the Brazilian national team had here. They came in, they took over the town. It's to happen again, one with your permission, without your permission. I'm just trying to give you a heads up. I'd rather, you know, I've talked to Mary and I've talked to some people in Santa Clara that worked in facilities or something like that. And I know, and I'm discussing that we need some sort of grant, community person to bring and to bring the whole community together through these sports. And we need a home, we're looking for this hometown, you know, I'm pitching, I'm not to pitch it, I'm going to have a buddy of mine try to pitch it. I don't know if you know him, but there's a guy, I know Mark Langston, who is a pitcher for, a baseball pitcher. And he's, he was well-known in this area. But so I'm going to try to get him to pitch it. But I'm looking for a community grant for that. So if you can set aside some money for, you know, just initial things and have your blessing for, you know, adopting a team like Brazil, you know, because when World Cup comes and we do have, you know, a winning team, it'll bring in a lot more than, you know, people remember what's going on. I'm a little nervous on that, this stuff. But, you know, I've been, you've probably seen some of these pictures, you know, going around town and passing out World Cup stuff, so, and then talking about Super Bowl and March Madness. And they're all for it. I know you guys, it's to be a headache for you. You're not going to stop what's coming. And I, you know, trying to warn you more and I'm trying to work with you, but it's hard, you know, because I know that there's a lot going on. So thanks.
Okay, thank you. Will Whitney?
Good evening, council members. I'm Will Whitney, general manager of the Billy Jones Wildcat Railroad here in Los Gatos. We were one of the grant recipients last year and I just want to take this time to personally thank you all for choosing us. We were able to use that grant rail to, sorry, we were able to use that grant money to buy new rail for the railroad, approximately 6,000 pounds of it. It was really exciting to have brand-new rail to work with, as well as gathering all of our new, well, new and old volunteers and doing track work, which is not something we can really do a lot of if we don't have new rail to work with. So again, I just want to say thank you so much. It was all in our video, which also prior to me being the general manager of the railroad, I was and still am a filmmaker. So the fact that there was a video component to this was just so exciting for me to take off my railroad hat, put on a director cap and just kind of get to work filming again. So it was a lot of fun. We actually just posted the video today on all of our social media. I'm getting so many comments that people want to see the rest of the track work and everything. So it was a great opportunity for us. It was a new, unique experience for my volunteers to get to do some track work and that wouldn't have been possible without you. So I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any more cards. Is there anyone online who would like to speak about community grants?
There's no hands on Zoom.
Okay, so I'll close the public portion of the hearing and see whether there are any sort of clarifying questions or comments that council members would like to make to start the discussion. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'll just start with, I sent out a desk item with some ideas, but all, some of those are more specific. I think maybe starting out at a higher level to Director Baker's questions. My opinion is that for this year, especially with the fact that we're already at, you know, if we approve everything in the staff report for sustaining grants, $126,800. That would only leave us with, you know, about $30,000 for competitive. I don't think we should try to have a competitive one-time grant process this year. But I do think to Director Baker's last question, I think, much to his dismay, I'm sure, I think we should try, my opinion is that we should allocate the money that we have in front of us this evening and then come back and work through a process ahead of strategic priorities to ensure that these are the organizations and funding that best align with our collective priorities. Because I think these could be or they could not be. But I don't think, for me, I'm in a position to just try to play around with all of those numbers tonight. So I would like to, for it to come back, you know, around strategic priorities, have that discussion then. But I think we should decide what to do with the $155,000 this evening.
Thank you. And I did read your thoughtful ideas and I do have some questions and comments about it, but are there other council members who would like to kind of weigh in at the beginning of this? Councilmember Risto?
Thank you. I thought, I mean, this grant process has evolved, morphed, become a really interesting way for innovative programs in our community to be funded. It's unusual for a municipality to be able to do this. And I am really enamored with some of the And I am really enamored with some of the projects that have been funded, and I think it's great to be able to do that. I'm also looking at the fact that with our difficult budget that we have this year and will have next year, and dipping into reserves and not knowing what the future holds, I feel like while we're tightening our belts on other things, I'm not sure if I feel comfortable having competitive grants. I feel more comfortable with adding to our sustaining grant, for example, the shower program. Maybe having a discussion about where the money for, how we allocate the money for rent, rental assistance, because I think that is going, that is a problem. That is, that's a solution to keeping people from homelessness, and we have organizations that are successful at that. And I would want to make sure that we retain the funding for that. But while I was trying to grapple with, what do we do for competitive? I have to thank council member Moore for his thoughtful proposals because I think maybe not allocating the remainder of the money beyond the sustaining grant and holding on to it in case something comes up. In case something catastrophic happens and it turns out one of our organizations needs more money for nutrition, or another one, you know, under our sustaining grants, either those needs expand or a new one arises, not to spend that, all that money right now and then have to start looking for it. So that's kind of where my thought is.
So I would add a thought, not surprisingly, maybe a little different perspective on this. Essentially, the proposal is to bulk up our sustaining grants from 70,000 to 126,000. And so I have, you know, given that, that only leaves 28,000 to allocate under sustaining. But, you know, I think that there's a lot of merit in the competitive grant program. And I think that eliminating that competitive grant program to such a degree by bulking up the sustaining would eliminate some things that I think we're very proud that we did. And I'm just going to read a few of them that we've covered over the last few years. Art Docents of Los Gatos, AWO, Billy Jones Wildcat, Collaborative Agencies Disaster Relief Effort, Kyle Taylor Foundation, Los Gatos Community Concert Association, Los Gatos Music and Arts, Numu, Parents Helping Parents. And these have all been covered without these organizations having to come to the council. These have followed a fair process where they made their case to a, in an effective way through an application and then evaluation by our community members. And if, it's likely that if we eliminate community grants that fell into the competitive area, those organizations are going to come back to the council like they did five years ago and six and seven years ago. And we will then have to evaluate them as one-offs without the context of other community needs. They wouldn't be subject to a fair process and a rigorous process that we put in place. And even looking at some of these in the bulking up, I think allocating the double, a normal sustaining grant to one of our best nutrition programs may not be the right thing to do and call it a sustaining grant when that organization is encouraged and is starting the process of obtaining other sustaining funding sources. So I think that, coming back to the first question, I do think that the sustaining grants, but from my perspective, it would be better to retain some more money in the community grant program, kind of go back to the level that we were at before ARPA, before COVID, where we had some sustaining grants and we had some competitive grants. Because I think it serves the needs of the community. It allows for innovation. It isn't just the same old organizations getting their things. It allows for some new ideas to come forward. I know it comes with a cost to staff, and there's a process overhead with administering the competitive grants in particular. It's about, I think, 100 and 120 staff hours or so. But I would kind of remind the community that that 120 hours implements a fair process, one that's open for public competition, and it leverages thousands of hours of work on the part of our nonprofits who receive some of these grants. And so we will, we would have to, if we were to retain at the level we were at of about 70,000, and maybe considering adding the rental assistance program to that, which I'd like to discuss, that would still give us around 65,000 in, that could be available through the competitive grant program. So I wanted to put that out there as an alternative to discuss.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I'm not at all opposed to that, sort of, you know, conceptually. I think the challenge I see is just, you know, how, the back-of-the-envelope math I'm doing is, you know, if you have Live Oak Nutrition, you know, and bring down, you know, maybe bring down Cassie to 10, bring down Nextdoor to 10, I think you're still only left with something in the ballpark of like $50,000 for competitive one-time grants. And, and so, you know, maybe you say 10 organizations get $5,000 each. You know, I'm, I'm open to that, something like that. I think the, what I'm grappling with is how we want to, I mean, I guess, this is exactly what Director Baker wanted us to discuss, what we want this program to be. Is it, you know, everybody in the community who comes up with a really good idea, or many organizations who come up with a really good idea can get funding? Or is it funding organizations that specifically align with priorities, and especially priorities that the town of Los Gatos, you know, cannot do on its own? I think that's why we've seen so many of these be sort of food assistance, human service assistance, homelessness assistance. And, you know, then we have domestic violence assistance in there, too. Those are things the town of Los Gatos is not well-equipped to do. And theoretically, an organization like the county should do things like that. But obviously, we have needs in our community that are not fully being met. And so it, to me, it makes a lot of sense that we spend, you know, money to support West Valley Community Services, St. Vincent de Paul, Live Oak Nutrition, organizations like that. I think they sort of punch above their weight and do a lot of good. And, and so what I'm grappling with is how much we can or should lower the amount of funding we give to them to give to a less sort of focused process that could or could not end up sort of landing on all of the organizations we might want, you know, genuinely torn.
If I, let me just respond quickly and then go to Councilmember Badami. Yeah, I think that we are in a situation where there are more compelling, fundamental core needs for things like nutrition and other services that the county is going to have a challenge in providing. I do think that our competitive grant process does allow for that. So as an example, there were times with Live Oak Nutrition when they were just receiving an ongoing sustaining grant of around 22,000 to 23,000. But then there was a problem, and they came back and they entered the competitive grant program and received another, I think, 25,000 through that process. And so I wouldn't, I think there is a way through competitive grant. And I would suggest, if we were to take a look at what's a baseline for sustaining grant, that we look at the 24 to 25 level, which is 70,000. Maybe add to that the rental program. And, and then kind of work from there with what the balance is. Anyway, that's just my quick response. Councilmember Badami, I cut you off there.
Oh, no, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on the vice mayor. I believe he mentioned favoring a less focused process in favor of more money to the sustaining grants. Is that how I understood it? Because I, I like the idea of more money going to the competitive grants because I see that as more of a democratic process, and we are a very innovative town.
Sorry, to be clear, I was saying the competitive process is what I would consider to be somewhat less focused and that we're not determining the amount of money. But, you know, perhaps that's not helpful framing.
Okay, thank you for that. I like the idea that some of the politics are taken away from the competitive nature of it. Because then, well, we have to decide who's going to be the decision-makers. And that's another item of the one through five that we have to decide as to who the grants go to.
Councilman, I hope I haven't been ignoring you.
So my, my comment is, if we're going to keep the competitive grants, which I'm hearing at least two, I think, sounding like they want to do that, we need to look at item three, in my opinion, for me to vote for it, how to reduce the cost of the staff. You know, currently, if, you know, I think it was mentioned, 60,000 for competitive grants, but it costs 20,000 in staff work if we do business as usual. So that's 80,000. So of 80,000, we give out 60. So that's, that's effectively a 25% overhead, which, you know, that just seems too high to me. I want to find a way to reduce that cost. It just, it just seems like we're giving, we're spending too much just to do competitive grants. I'll leave it there for now.
Councilmember Badami?
So with that comment, Councilmember Reni, thank you. But I hate to jump to number three, but I was really taken with that we stipulate that 100% of the service or event funded by the grant takes place within the municipal boundaries of Incorporated Los Gatos. And that would reduce some of the staff cost. But we can entertain that maybe when we come to number three.
Yeah, thank you. So I would, I would agree with that. I would also think that maybe the first one, the idea to allow an organization to receive competitive one-time award every other year rather than remaining eligible every year. I mean, that sort of sounds like if they get it every year, it's a sustaining. And so that one also seemed to make sense to me. That would, I think you said, lower the number of applications by about 50%? Is that correct?
So it's going to depend on the pool. Last year, you had 24, 24 organizations that received a competitive grant. So if you instituted that in this year, you'd, we'd have 24 or less applications right off the bat. If, if that would be too much of a shock and a rule change and would be something we would institute the following year, then the following year, we would see a reduction of however many grants were given out for those applications. Potentially, that would give a wider range of opportunity for other organizations, possibly ones where their grant-writing ability may not be as strong, even though their organization has some great ideas, to rise to the top.
Okay, we're kind of having a ranging discussion here. We might want to go through these sequentially, potentially with a motion on them. And so is that, is that the intention for us to do, work that way?
That would be very helpful.
Okay. So number one, would the council like to move forward with the proposed sustaining grants or make any changes? So further comments or maybe someone would suggest a motion? Vice Mayor?
Thank you. So I, with the math I just did, I can get us down to $100,000 for the sustaining grants if we want to try something like that, which would leave $55,000 for competitive, which would be, and I couldn't repeat this, or, you know, we can talk more about it. But it would be reducing Live Oak to 23,000, giving $3,000 to St. Vincent de Paul for laundry, $20,000 to West Valley Community Services for human services support, $10,000 to St. Vincent de Paul for rental assistance, $10,000 to the Los Gatos Anti-Racism Coalition for rental assistance, $10,000 to Cassie, $10,000 to Nextdoor Community Solutions, $6,000 to St. Luke's for food pantry support, and $8,000 to the shower program. And that would be $100,000, which would then leave us $55,000 for the competitive one-time grants process or something else.
Councilmember Badami?
So I have a question maybe for staff, and maybe I need to understand why we wouldn't just leave 20,000 to West Valley Community Services for rental assistance and get rid of that and entertain two new entities that would probably require more staff work, which is what we want to get away from.
Totally fair question. So the, from my understanding, so this was, these numbers, not to put anyone on the spot, but these numbers were created by staff, right? So the, this is, last year, West Valley Community Services got $15,000 for what was called rental assistance, I think was actually intended for case management. And that, from my understanding, that case management is not, West Valley Community Services does not have the capacity to have case managers in Los Gatos. West Valley Community Services refers a lot of their, a lot to most of their rental assistance cases that exist in Los Gatos to St. Vincent de Paul and the Los Gatos Anti-Racism Coalition, both of which are 100% volunteer-run, both of which are very, can get out the money very, very quickly because they have less stringent requirements than West Valley Community Services. And so I think my, my take is that the $20,000 to West Valley Community Services for rental assistance was included because staff was thinking, we gave out rental assistance to these three organizations, we're just going to consolidate it just to West Valley Community Services. And my argument is, West Valley Community Services wasn't quite doing rental assistance with that money, and we have two local organizations that are much better equipped to provide that specific service.
Thanks. I just want to make a couple of questions about the rental assistance program. So I think it's, it's been successful and it's helped people. But it is the, probably the one program that essentially gives money or direct financial help to specific individuals. And it's without oversight from the town. The nonprofit administers that. So my question is, has West Valley Community Service, which is what's listed here, provided rental assistance? And are they qualified to administer that program, you know, including auditing financial capabilities of individuals and things like that?
So I'd speak to a couple of points there. The first one is that, as Vice Mayor Moore stated, when we put these numbers together, this was the numbers as we were looking at them in April, they're just verbatim from that report. So since that time, I have heard that there's been some turnover in West Valley Community Services in terms of their department that would, because handle these particular, this particular service here. And so it may take them a while to get back on their feet with that. The 15,000 that they were getting specifically for rental assistance programs actually came from a line item from CDD. It didn't come from this sustaining grant program. So I wasn't taking in the reporting of that particular line item, where I was taking in the reporting from St. Vincent de Paul and Los Gatos Anti-Racism Coalition. Both of those organizations have turned in all the reporting and they Both of those organizations have turned in all the reporting, and they've been very, very, very good about the reporting. So I, but for the West Valley reporting, since that one doesn't actually come through me because it's a different line item, I would have to do a little bit of research with CDD to see how that reporting is done through them.
And then just to follow up to that, the other thing about the rental assistance program, again, seems a little bit unique in that we're, the proposal is to split that to two organizations. I really don't see that with the other sustaining grants and us splitting a single set of services to multiple organizations. What's the rationale for having two organizations receive or administer rental assistance programs in Los Gatos? Why shouldn't it just be one?
So I didn't propose the two? So there you go. But, you know, since you looked at me, I'm, I just, I'll throw out just kind of a thought experiment. At the May meeting, you had one of, you had a representative from one of the organizations, one of those two organizations, come forward, and they gave a really good testimony about how useful and how impactful the rental assistance program is. And he gave an example of, it was a single mother who had lost her job, she couldn't pay the rent and needed some immediate assistance, and what was communicated there was that the one organization, Los Gatos Anti-Racism Coalition, immediately contacted St. Vincent de Paul, and there was the collaboration, there was the communication, and together they were able to jump in and help that one individual. And unequivocally fantastic for the work that they did. On my end, and this is the thought experiment, I was thinking, okay, so that one person was helped, but on my end, I got two sets of applications, two sets of contracts, two sets of agreements, two sets of reporting, two sets of things, I guess, under an audit if they ask for it, two sets of invoices, two sets of all this stuff, and on the applicant's side, that single mother, she had to do two sets of documents, two sets of reporting, two sets of, and so I was thinking, instead of giving half the money and half the money and having these organizations work together, which they can, what if you just gave all the money to one organization and cut the bureaucracy in half, not only on our end, but also for that particular applicant? That single mother would have come out exactly the same place, she would have gotten the money she needed, half the amount of work. Which organization would be the best to do that? I'll leave that up to you guys as a decision. I'm not going to weigh in on that one, but that was just a thought process there for you to kind of consider.
Okay, so I, I understand the point that perhaps one organization is better. I think it might be not a great idea to have that debate at the council level, but I would be willing to allocate 20,000 and let staff make a recommendation about which single agency would be the best one to administer it.
Ouch, you're going to give that one to me?
Yeah, I mean, it wouldn't have to be done tonight.
Okay, I'm there for you if you need me to be.
I mean, that's just my idea. Councilmember Aristo?
Thank you. I think, yeah, that might make sense. I was thinking about the rental assistance, and I think it makes sense to give the money either, well, I was thinking also Los Gatos Anti-Racism Coalition and St. Vincent de Paul because they are both local, the money is restricted to people that live in Los Gatos, they have essentially no overhead because it's all volunteers, they each received $12,500 last year, so it's not like this year would be new. Given the fact that they work together and share, you know, cross-reference to each other, I didn't think about the whole application thing, the double application and all of that. So maybe to be deferred to another night, if we just allocate the $20,000 for rental assistance and then see if one of those two organizations, who have demonstrated capability of doing this, if St. Vincent de Paul and Los Gatos Anti-Racism Coalition want to discuss it and discuss with staff who wants to be the lead agency, they receive the money and they work together with each other, because I think they do have a good working relationship that might eliminate that duplication, not duplicity. And then one quick question, was that the only instance in which both organizations helped the same person?
So that was the instance that was given just in this particular testimony that the council had heard. I could go back through the records and see if there was other overlap, but I don't have that before me at the moment.
Okay, but I appreciate that they're working together, and I think it's important to have rental assistance on our sustaining right now. I don't see it getting better going forward.
Vice Mayor?
Two things I'll just add. One is that being that they're 100% volunteer-run organizations that serve Los Gatos in particular, I think both organizations have capacity, sort of, I don't know if issues is the right word, but they, I don't know if it makes, if it would ever make sense to have one organization doing all of the rental assistance in Los Gatos. Interestingly, two, if we, each of these organizations does rental assistance outside of the town of Los Gatos allocating this money, so we're not going to stop the issue of both of them contributing. I actually think it's a good thing. I think both of them have limits on the amount of money that they can give, and I think they, yeah, I don't know. I'm, to the mayor's sort of point, I would be willing to, you know, have, allocate $20,000 to go to St. Vincent de Paul and/or Los Gatos Anti-Racism Coalition, and perhaps staff could help facilitate a conversation between the two organizations about what makes sense. And I, like, you know, what Councilmember Aristo was saying, maybe one is the lead organization. I don't know how that works with their financials, so I'm, I guess I'm open, but I wouldn't want to, you know, sort of advantage one of these 100% volunteer-run, you know, giving organizations over the other in a way that, you know, I think would be perhaps unfair. So I'm willing to go with that if it's between those two organizations and staff works with them to figure out what works best.
So I think we're kind of getting to the, well, we're getting to the second part of one, but I wanted to just go back over the numbers. I came up with around 90,000. You came up with 100. I just want to make sure I understand what your numbers are.
Oh, okay.
For sustaining.
Sure, sure. So I said, and maybe I just am, you know, bad at math, 23,000 for Live Oak, 3,000 for laundry, 20,000 for West Valley Community Services for human services, 20,000 for rental assistance between St. Vincent de Paul and Anti-Racism Coalition, 10,000 for Cassie, 10,000 for Nextdoor, 6,000 for St. Luke's, 8,000 for the shower program.
Okay, and that comes out to 101, I think.
So I'm only a little bad at math.
Well, also, if the laundry request is for 2,500, I think we should, I think it should be 2,500.
Sure, sure, I was just rounding it. Yeah, that's totally fine.
No, that's fine. And I think same thing, there was another one.
Right, St., Los Gatos Methodist is 7,800.
Right.
So you can, yeah, now you're at 100,200. Director Baker, did you do the math? What, how did we do?
Math is happening as we speak.
Okay, good. I would love to hear the staff's math on this, though. But it sounds like we're converging on a direction here that I think is, and I think it does set a structure for future, because, you know, we don't intend to be in this budget crunch using reserves forever, and yet I don't think we'll be back to having the level of ARPA funding that we had either. But it seems, though, we're headed in a direction where, you know, some of these agencies that may run into trouble may come in and make an application through the competitive grant program for a significant amount of money, and it might be absolutely the right thing to do. And that's why I would not want to limit it to the 5,000, I think, particularly if it were one of our key agencies that came back in, so.
Just verifying a number with you, for Live Oak at 23,000, West Valley, excuse me, West Valley at 20,000, 20,000 for rental assistance, 10 for Cassie, 10 for Nextdoor, 6 for St. Luke's, 7,800 for Los Gatos Methodist, and 2,500 for the laundry program. That puts us at 99,300. That leaves you with a remainder of 55,700 that is unallocated at this point.
So would somebody like to put a motion around that?
Sure. I will move to set our sustaining grants at 23,000 for, $23,000 for Live Oak Nutrition, 2,500 to St. Vincent de Paul for the laundry program, 20,000 to West Valley Community Services for human services support, 20,000 for rental assistance for staff to work with, St. Vincent de Paul and the Los Gatos Anti-Racism Coalition to fairly appropriate, 10,000 for Cassie, 10,000 for Nextdoor Community Solutions, 6,000 for St. Luke's for food pantry support, and 7,800 to the Los Gatos Methodist Church for the shower program.
Okay, I will second that motion. It's further discussion. Okay, could we have a roll call on that, please?
Councilmember Eni?
Aye.
Councilmember Aristo?
Aye.
Councilmember Badami?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Hudes?
Aye.
Okay, let's see if we can go to the next question. So the, I think we sort of talked about this, but there's a remaining amount, let's see.
Remaining amount is 55,700.
Okay. And would the council like to make them available as competitive one-time grants? Vice Mayor?
I just want to ask really of staff, so you've put a lot of ideas on sort of how to make this a little bit easier on your end, reduce hours. What would, what are the things that would make it the easiest and reduce the most hours? If you know that.
So those were, we're putting under question three a couple of different bullet points there. So as I've learned out, those are sort of the easy low-hanging fruit that would reduce the workload by way of reducing the number of eligible applicants in terms of the 100% within Los Gatos and the every other year, you can have it available. And then the other two are, if you set a limit and say, we're only going to give out X the number of awards, or the maximum grant award is X amount or less, if you have a lower grant award amount, you have agencies that may look at that lower grant award amount and say, you know what, that's not, that's not really worth our time, we'll move on with some other things. I know I'm like that internally for library things, sometimes things pop up and it's just like, that's not worth it. But we do know that lower amounts have had some very good results for some applicants, so that may work. So that would have the potential of lowering some of that workload. Those two, the number of awards that you give out and the lower grant award probably have the least impact of those four suggestions that I have there.
Sorry, the lower grant amount and?
The lower grant amount and having fewer awards go out.
Okay.
The two that'll have probably the greatest impact would be every other year.
Mm-hmm.
You're eligible, and the 100% in Los Gatos, we do have, part of that grant rubric is showing that nexus and connection to how you're benefiting Los Gatos residents, but many of our applicants have more regional ideas or kind of, kind of go outside of our incorporated boundaries, so that would, that would help significantly.
Got it, okay, thank you, yeah. And so I'll just share, those two ideas, I think I would, could get behind for sure, 100% in Los Gatos and every other year. Every other year, I'm curious to hear what others think, but 100% in Los Gatos makes a lot of sense.
Councilmember Badami, and then Councilmember Aristo?
Well, I was going to make a motion, but Councilmember Aristo might want to make a comment. I just want to make a motion on number two, that should be very clear-cut, that with the remaining funds that are not allocated as sustaining grants, that we make them available as competitive one-time grants. That's my motion.
Second?
Sure, I'll second, and then I want to say something.
Okay, so go ahead.
Thanks. So when I was thinking about this, we have talked more than once about the possibility of organizations that serve Los Gatos and provide important services facing significant budget cuts, I think about especially food assistance right now. We've been fortunate that seemingly in Los Gatos thus far, that has not been the case. We've been, you know, we have fared, in my opinion, better than some others have, but, you know, an organization like the county is having to slash its, the contracts and grants and funding it provides, especially in those areas, because the money has dried up. And so I think we've been, again, been fortunate that that has not been the case thus far in Los Gatos, knock on wood. But the reason I proposed what I did of reserving some portion of this funding for a future, you know, budget decision, was to be able to be responsive to that sort of crisis should it arise. I guess I just want us to be thoughtful about that. I'm not tied to the idea, and perhaps we could put something in the competitive grants, you know, process about, you know, serving new or particular needs in Los Gatos, I don't know, but just something I wanted to hear what, if others have any thoughts on.
Well, I would just comment that I think the competitive grant process does allow for that, and it's one of the features of the process is that it is fairly flexible and can go with, you know, what's happening, and that's one of the reasons why I wouldn't want to lower the maximum to 5,000, because I could see a potential circumstance where we'd have to go significantly more than that as well. But in terms of keeping it, I think maybe we could tweak the program a little bit, but I think that it is able to handle that type of need in our community. Councilmember Aristo, or?
Just speaking to the rubric that's used to rate the grants, one of the criteria in the rubric specifically looks at if you're speaking to a new problem or new hurdle that you have to, that's come up, and the grant will address that, or a new idea, so that it's actually a specific line of rating in the grant rubric. I do think the grant rubric is pretty solid, we've had good luck with it, and so it does allow for some flexibility there.
Yes, Councilmember Aristo?
Thank you. I mean, when I look through who has received the competitive grants, I mean, we have great organizations. My concern would be that in a year that we're trying to cut back on, you know, have staff spend less time doing non-essential things, and I'm not saying the grants aren't essential, but we're asking staff to cut back, we're, we've got a tight budget, we're looking at things getting tighter in the future, and the county has a $1 billion cut in their budget. The competitive grant process might be a way for a group that can meet a need in the community to come forward, but it's a one-time, there's a window. So when you apply for that grant, and once the grants are given out, if something comes up three months later, there's not money for that. And then we end up with potentially people coming to the council and asking for money, which is what we don't want. And so I think, I'm not going to oppose the motion, but what I'm concerned about is we're setting ourselves up for saying, yes, we have extra money for these other programs that we don't know what they are, we've got our sustaining grants, but if one of our sustaining grant partners, like say Live Oak, loses county support, or suddenly has 300 more people, you know, not 300, I'm sorry, 30 more people coming to lunch, and they're not getting reimbursed by the county, and they run into a financial difficulty, we are not going to want to start digging out of other parts of our budget, and we've already taken this. So that would be my reason to feel uncomfortable this year about going forward with the competitive grants, but, and also that, yes, if somebody sees a need, yeah, they can apply for a competitive grant, but they can only do it in the application window. So those are my reservations, but I'm not opposed to the motion.
Yeah, I would just say, I think those kind of things could definitely happen. In fact, they did happen to Live Oak, and Live Oak did have a $25,000 shortfall because the county didn't reimburse at the level they expected. And then they shortfall, because the county didn't reimburse at the level they expected. And then they applied for competitive grant, and they were given that. Now, we had more money to be able to cover that at that time, but since then, their board has put doubled efforts into finding sustaining money for a portion. And so, I, I think we have a fairly robust process here. And, you know, push comes to shove, if we have serious issues, because these are trade-offs that the council will have to make about other things that we're doing in, with the use of our budget, and it, it is possible that we might have to do something. But I, I feel like we do have a, a robust process. The, the biggest issue with the process is the time that it takes, but like I said, I think a hundred and twenty hours of staff time leverages thousands of hours in our community, if you look at what we've been able to do with that. So, I am in favor of having the competitive grant, having that money go to the competitive grant program as the, the motion. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Yeah, I'll, I'll just say, I, I actually don't think, I, I think the competitive grant program does a good thing. I don't think the competitive grant program addresses what I'm talking about for the, you know, perhaps the, the main reason that the council doesn't have oversight over it. So, it's, it's, you know, well-intentioned, thoughtful commissioners deciding within the rubric what is best, you know. But, but it's not necessarily trying to fill holes in services in the community. I, I, you know, perhaps, and, and I think that happens sometimes, but there are things that are, you know, I, I look at some of the things last year that were entirely new, entirely, you know, not doing that. So, I, I guess that's my, my hesitation. I, I agree, I can vote for this, because I like the competitive grants program, and we can always, you know, work to find other money if, if the, the need arises. But I, I would just say, I, I don't think that the competitive grants program meaningfully achieves what this sort of emergency fund that, that I'm talking about.
Well, I would just say, I think we have to keep in mind that we're taking the competitive grant program down from two-hundred-thirty thousand to fifty-five thousand. So, there will be some tough decisions in the competitive grant program. I think some of the things that we like, that we saw on the list, are just not going to get funded. Most of them are not. And so, but I, I, I trust the process and the rubric, and I also trust that if it isn't lining up with council priorities, that Mr. Baker and the town manager will come back to us and say, "Look, we're having trouble here. There's, there, we need to, we need to look at this." But, okay. So, we have a motion and a second. Could we take a roll call on this?
Councilmember Enni?
Aye.
Councilmember Aristo?
Aye.
Councilmember Badami?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Hudes?
Aye.
Okay, let's move to the next question. And so, this is the modifications. We've discussed this a little bit. I actually like the two that were suggested, and I think they would go a long way. Other people want to weigh in on that?
Thank you. Yeah, I agree with that. I think the two main things stipulating a hundred percent of the service or event funded, takes place in the town of Los Gatos, will first of all focus which groups are applying and what types of things. So, I think that fits well with what we need to be doing. And the other is allowing an organization to receive an award every other year. And, that was the other one, right? Yeah. And I think, I guess the question would be, does it start this year or next year?
And I would love a little direction on what you think would be best here. I would say, from a staff point of view, it may be, so you, you gave out a lot of competitive one-time grants last year. So, there's twenty-four. And so, there may be quite a few organizations that, that say, "Woo, that's a big change. If I wasn't expecting that, I would not be able to apply this year." However, funds are limited, and so, that would reduce the staff load considerably, because twenty-four organizations would have to wait another year. The flip side of that is that if you put it into place now, and you kept that as a rule going forward, that over the course of time, that would play out with the staff savings. So, you wouldn't get it necessarily at this first year, if you didn't implement it in the first year. It's going to be more competitive with a smaller pool of money anyway, but then you'll see the staff savings of that and the, the workload savings in the following year. So, either way, you could go with that. I'm, I'm going to leave it to however you think.
I would be leaning toward just doing it this year. I mean, there's going to be so much less money that a lot of organizations that applied in the past won't get funded anyway. It'll give new opportunities. And also, as I look through the list, I mean, there are groups that have gotten money from us once, and then not in the last two years. And I think that there is some crossover between some of the groups looking for funding. And so, I, I'll actually make the motion that, and we can see what happens, that with the competitive grant program continuing, that starting this year, an organization can only receive a competitive award every other year, rather than remaining eligible every year. So, that means organizations that got money last year, the year before, or two years ago and the year before would be eligible, but not last year. And we would stipulate that a hundred percent of the services, service or event funded by the grant takes place within the municipal boundaries of incorporated Los Gatos. Yes?
But just one small clarifying question with that one. I'm going to read, so if I read that, the way that I, I wrote it, I was also thinking that Vizona is the county too. And so, I just, if, if you agree with me on what incorporated is.
Right, if that is not incorporated Los Gatos.
Right, if you don't, if you don't agree with that interpretation, voice it now, because I'm, I'm going to go, if you go with this, I'm going to say that.
But this year, I'm saying incorporated Los Gatos. Those are our taxpayers. Those are our residents.
Yeah, so anything happening in Vizona is, is not.
If it's exclusively Vizona, yes, correct. Yeah.
I would ask the question, question, my understanding is Vizona is incorporated Los Gatos, but it's county property. So.
I'm not going to get into this one.
Okay, I'm so confused. Okay, I'm not going to weigh in on Vizona. I'm going to say that it's up to staff to determine what is incorporated property in Los Gatos. I don't know if the geese in Vizona can vote for council members or not, but that might be the determining factor.
It's a big constituency right there.
That's right.
Councilmember Badami?
I'm seconding the motion.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I don't know how I feel about the Vizona thing, but I, I actually, I, I would not support kicking off the, the twenty-four organizations that, that got it last year, perhaps for the sole reason that I know there are organizations who do events every other year, or I, I think there, I don't know how many organizations this, this would apply to, but I can imagine there would be some that would not have applied last year, had they known they couldn't get it this year. And so, I would, I'd be fine with every other year, but starting, everybody can apply this year, and then next year, they can't. That, that would be my preference.
I guess my primary.
Yeah, go ahead.
Response to that. I mean, I'll be flexible. The, my primary reason to do that is immediately implementing relief on staff. I mean, if we're talking about a tight budget, if we're talking about, you know, how many hours have to go into this, if right now, the first step we do will be less workload for staff than it was last year, and we are spending less money on this, I say start this year. But, I, I think for the moment, unless I hear otherwise, I'll leave the motion as is, and we can see what happens, although that's it for me.
Yeah, I just add a comment that I, I agree. I think that we've promoted some of the ones who are on the list as one-time to sustaining, so I'm not as worried about some of those. And so, I think for, for the reason stated, I would support the motion. And it's possible that we'll end up with somebody who has a reason why they need to do something this year, and we've excluded them, and we'll get them a council, but I don't think it'll be a huge number like we've seen in the past. Yes?
If it helps, just for purpose of thought, the, in that addendum that had all the ones that got an award last year, that wasn't all the applicants. That was just all the awards. So, there was about forty-five, you know, additional, I mean, there was, there was a, a good number of people that applied that did not get an award. And I do get calls and emails quite frequently, referred from many of you to me, about, about information for the community grant program. So, there will be no shortage of applications, even if you were to implement this, this year.
Vice Mayor, go ahead.
That's what you told us to do, Director Baker. We're supposed to direct them to you. That's the, the point of this.
Well, I'm here for you.
So, I'm, I, I understand the reasoning. I, I'm looking at the list of everybody who has, you know, gotten, received one-time grant funding in the last four years, and that, that list is in the staff report. And very few of the organizations who got money in the past didn't get money, or did, did get money in the la, this past year, and did not get money. I, I'm looking at the list of who would be eligible, given this criteria, and I am seeing almost none of them be Los Gatos-based organizations, because I think the, the Los Gatos, a hundred percent Los Gatos criteria kicks off at least fifty, I, I'm, I don't know if it's fifty percent, a lot of these organizations. So, I, I'm worried about, you know, sort of, I don't know if lowering the bar is, is appropriate to say, but I do think we will be changing who, who is getting the money in a way that I, that is not my goal.
Can, so I would just ask a little clarification there. When I, the one-hundred percent Los Gatos, and the way that I was hoping to kind of put that forward, was that one-hundred percent of the event activity or service happens within Los Gatos, not necessarily that the organization needs to be based in Los Gatos. So, I could have an organization which is based in San Jose, but their, the project that they would bring forward, I would say, is that, is that particular event that you're going to do one-hundred percent within Los Gatos? It's not a regional thing. It's not a Silicon Valley thing. So, it's not the location of the organization. It's the location of the service. It's the way that I was trying to present that.
Me too.
Oh, excellent.
Councilmember Aristo?
Not to belabor the point, the other thing is, you know, this year, we're going to have about one-fifth the amount of money available. That right there is going to cut down who's going to get grants. So, you know, there will be opportunities for people that didn't get funded last year, but one-fifth is many opportunities. So, it's just different this year. Lots of people are not going to be as happy as they'd like to be.
Yeah, I, I, like I said, I think, I think it's important that we take a step to relieve some of the effort on staff. It's an important program. Staff does a wonderful job in administering this and thinking about it and making sure it's done on a fair basis. And I think it's, it's really one of the examples of, of how good we are as a community. And so, I think, I think it'll be helpful, so I'm going to support the motion. Do we have any more comments? Okay, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Enni?
Aye.
Councilmember Aristo?
Aye.
Councilmember Badami?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Moore?
No.
Mayor Hudes?
Aye. Okay, so the next question is, who would the council prefer for the composition of the grant reader, raider pool? And if I could just ask a question, is there a proposal to change what we've done in the past?
No, I made a mistake. So, this is what happened. It has been two members of the Arts and Culture Commission and two members of the Community Health and Senior Services Commission. That has been the makeup that council put together. Then, last year, council said you'd, you'd like to have a member of the DEI Commission be a reviewer. And, looking back at your notes, as you wanted them to be a reviewer of the rubric, not a reviewer of the grant applications themselves. And I had already pushed that ball down the hill. It was rolling, and there was a DEI Commissioner who was reading the applications. My apologies there. But, what was interesting about this is it made a great experiment, because I said, "Oh, how good is the rubric if I take the ratings with two arts commissioners, two CHSC commissioners, and then I compare them with and without the DEI Commissioner?" And when I did that comparison, there's no significant difference in the ratings. There was minute, minute differences that might have put like, you know, like, you know, the, the second best and the third best place, or something like, like, but in terms of who received grants and where that cutoff line was, there was no difference whether or not I had that, that fifth commissioner in there. So, I think that speaks to the, the, the grant rubric. However, I've kind of set this little precedent now, and so I just need to clarify what you'd like to do. It, you could do one from each group. You can stick with two from arts, two with CHSC. You could do three. You could, I don't know, pull somebody else in. You could do whatever you want. I just need you to clarify, so that I'm on the right path going forward, and my apologies for that little slip up in the past.
Councilmember Aristo?
Going into this, looking at it, I think we know that the, the rubric is solid. I think that was interesting to see what happens if you take the additional person out. And I think of all the things we're changing, I don't want to touch this. We've had this. I don't think we want to reinvent this wheel. It's rolling. It's working. And I guess then the cleanup would be to clarify that the role of the DEI Commissioner would then be the same as the arts commissioners and, you know, keep the, have the composition be five people. So, two from arts, two from community health and senior service, one from DEI. If that's how it went last year, and that's how it was interpreted, I would be fully in favor of keeping it that way going forward, until or unless it breaks.
Vice Mayor?
Second.
So, that was a motion, is that correct?
Sure.
Okay. Further discussion on this? Don't see any. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Enni?
Aye.
Councilmember Aristo?
Aye.
Councilmember Badami?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Hudes?
Aye. So, that passes. And now, we look at number five, which is, would the council like to revisit community grants again during the fiscal twenty-six, twenty-seven budget, or is the council comfort, comfortable committing to the direction given at tonight's meeting as a multi-year framework? Thoughts about that? Councilmember Aristo?
Thank you. I have a question. I mean, first of all, I am inclined to just say, "Let's go with this for the foreseeable future." We don't know if and when wheels will fall off the bus, or what else will happen with our numbers. So, what I'm, I guess I'm asking, if we say yes, then each year, what could change is who is on the sustaining or the dollar amounts of sustaining, because we, we don't know what our budget will be. So, we can't say that the sustaining numbers stay, and the amount of money that goes to competitive stays. So, it sounds like that's going to still have to be a discussion each year?
So, what I would do is, in the budget, I would just pencil in exactly, if you went with, we're going to lock in this. In each year when we did the budget, I would just go ahead and I would pencil in these numbers exactly as you have them tonight. Of course, with all things in the budget, you can make some changes. But, what's happened in the past several years is that the community grants has been pulled out as sort of a separate discussion item. And I, I wouldn't do that. I'd just say, "That's what the numbers I'm putting forward. That's what's in the budget. We're going to assume that that's just going to, we're just going to roll with that." Obviously, you can make some changes if you want to, just like as you could with any other line item. It's just I, I wouldn't bring it to you for a separate discussion at study session, or at priority setting, or budget hearings, or anything. You'd just see the penciled-in numbers.
Okay, so when we get the budget, what we would receive as we're looking through it is sustaining grants. And then it would itemize who's receiving them and what the dollar amount is, and then competitive grants. And that would be a lump amount that would then be dealt with by the process, the rubric, the process we've discussed in the council. Okay. I move that we do it that way.
Okay, do we have a second? For Badami?
I'll second.
Okay, further discussion about it? Vice Mayor?
I guess the, the one thing I think would make sense is, as we're starting to have budget conversations and doing. conversations and doing strategic priorities, I do think it's worth getting a sense of where we're at budget-wise and thinking about the number. I think that's, it makes sense, because this is clearly one of the more fungible pieces of our budget. And I think that's only fair, because we have changed this up so many times. And I can tell you, I received like six emails from people being like, hey, what happened to the grants? So I think being transparent with our community, I think this gives them a good sense of what's coming. But I do think it's worth talking about, especially if we think the number could be lower.
Yeah, I agree with that, and I think that town managers put in place a process where we have a discussion, a high-level discussion about the budget, before we jump into the presentation and the details, and all the numbers are worked and all that. And this would be an item, I think, to bring into that high-level discussion. I think it'd be really valuable.
And I think as we go into the next year, where our deficit's going to be even larger, we may change the tenor of the conversations to be more high-level at the beginning, so we can talk about to what extent, as we're looking at reducing the support for our internal services and our primary strategic priorities, to what extent do you want to support external partners in terms of their mission, and how does that balance with internal as we go forth in the budget process? That direction will be important.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments? Okay, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Eni.
Aye.
Councilmember Aristo.
Aye.
Councilmember Badami.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Moore.
Aye.
Mayor Huddis.
Aye. Okay, well, I think that concludes that item. Yes?
Just because we had so many, I just wanted to do a quick read-through. These are going to be the paraphrased versions of the motion, to make sure that we got it. The motion number one was sustaining grants, $23,000 to Live Oak, $20,000 to West Valley, $20,000 to rental assistance, staff to meet with the organizations to figure out how that nibbies up. $10K to Cassie, $10K to Nextdoor Solutions for domestic violence, $6K to St. Luke's, $7,800 to Los Gatos Methodist, and $2,500 to the St. Vincent Laundry Program, for a total of $99,300. Motion number two, the remaining funds to the competitor program, which will put it at $55,700. Motion number three, to go every other year, so every other year, the organizations can receive, rather than every year. And that 100% of the grants take place within incorporated Los Gatos, with staff to confirm if Vizona is, falls in incorporated or not. Motion number four, five people on the rating committee, two from ACC, two from CHSC, one from DEI. And number five, I'm going to write these numbers right into the budget next year, rather than having it as a discussion item.
Very good. Thank you for the summary, and thank you for all the work on this and the ongoing work during the course of the year. So we now go to council matters, and then town manager, and then town attorney. So I'm going to start, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. So with the mayor, I participated in the youth commission interviews, which was a blast. Really enjoyed that, that the mayor talked more about that if he wants to. But one of the things I'll say is that we had, I forget exactly how many students we had, like, we had about 40 students apply, and miraculously, with one vote, we voted perfectly to get exactly the 16 students for the commission, which I just thought was miraculous. We should learn. I hosted an e-motorcycle listening session, had about 30 people show up to talk about this issue of e-bikes and e-motocycles. Clearly, I think there's a lot of interest from the community about this. I'm interested in doing more on this topic, but I'll just say for now, there's a lot of different opinions, there's a lot of confusion about what is legal, what is illegal. One of the biggest points of confusion that I think is important for us to get out into the community, is that most of the bikes that people, most of the motorcycles that people are seeing behave in really unsafe and dangerous ways are already illegal. They are completely abandoned, illegal, and you cannot ride them on streets. And so when we hear from people say, ban them, the answer has to be, we already did. We have to look at other solutions. So I think that's, it's a challenging issue, for sure. I attended the Silicon Valley Youth Climate Action Summit. There were about 500 local high school students who participated in this, and I helped facilitate a discussion group with some Los Gatos students. Always impressive and inspiring. I spoke with students from the West Valley College Student Government class incoming, and I am always harping on West Valley College, that they are Los Gatos's most local college, so try to support them however I can. Sort of more business update, the West Valley Sanitation District is now conducting a competitive search, competitive nationwide search, for the new executive, the new chief executive and engineer. And so that's going to be conducted over the next couple of months. And we're hoping to conclude that process for sure by the end of the year. It's a weird body to recruit for, because it's such a niche position, and we're a niche agency in that we're very small, and we don't treat water. We only, or we don't treat waste, we only transport it. So it's a very specific thing, so if you know anyone. Attended about half of the city's association board meeting, with the mayor attending the first half. Went to the Chamber Mixer last night, also a pickleball community meeting last night that I just have to compliment. Director Burnham and Commissioner Gleason on facilitating, it was, there were a lot of people there, I don't, at least 50, I think, super passionate, lots of feelings on all sides, and I think our team did a fantastic job facilitating that. I think there, that is going to be something we have to figure out as a council, how to deal with, because people feel so incredibly strongly. So I think that there might be decisions there soon. And lastly, held my community coffee meeting.
Councilmember Aristo.
Thank you. I represented the town at the VTA Policy Advisory Committee, and the two main things were, there was a discussion of future rollout of carpool with expansion of toll lanes in Santa Clara County, so there will be more toll lanes coming in. And then the other thing is, there were grants given for innovative transit solutions with Measure B money. And what really bubbled to the top is, most of the applications from different communities were for microtransit solutions. So hopper bus, or, you know, different community shuttles, and they're all competing with each other to do that, which led to a higher discussion of what role should VTA be playing? If they're seeing that all of the communities around them are trying to solve the last mile, it was pointed out by the representative from Cupertino, it's more than the last mile, now they're doing all the miles in between. What does that mean? What are the implications for VTA? Should VTA be taking a global look at this in our communities? Or, you know, how does it work if they're funding pilot programs, but we're seeing that there's holes in transit and a need for that? So it was a good discussion. We'll see where that goes. And then, finally, I met with a number of residents to discuss e-bike concerns and some development. And that was it.
Okay, Councilmember Badami.
Thank you, Mayor. Since our last meeting, I attended a meeting of the Finance Commission as an observer. I also met with Ryan Rosenberg of Los Gatos Thrives and received an update on our proposed community center. I met with John Whitney and Jim Foley regarding a development proposal, and I participated in a meeting of the Resident Wildfire Advisory Group.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Eni.
For me, two of those were the same. I met with John Whitney and Jim Foley on the all-affordable proposal they have. I met with Tom Picrow for the Los Gatos Thrives organization update. I also attended the Silicon Valley Clean Energy Board. I think the most significant item there is, the way that business works for us is, we put money in reserves in good years, and we take some money out in bad years. Last year, we put a lot of money into reserves. It's looking like our current year budget, we are going to be, just the nature of the way the business works, we will be taking money back out of reserves this coming year. That's it for me.
Okay, thank you. I participated in the youth commission interviews that the Vice Mayor mentioned, and it was an incredible experience with 40 of our tremendously bright students from a variety of high schools and a couple of middle schools as well. And, you know, unfortunately, we didn't have a place where every one of them, but we probably need to figure out how to continue that level of engagement with our young folks. And they had some tremendous ideas as well. I took a lot of notes, and we did settle on 16 who will serve on the youth commission. And I'm glad to say that they will continue to serve on our committees and commissions as liaisons, and have an opportunity to bring ideas to those commissions and to take back ideas to our youth community. I participated in a couple of wildfire advisory meetings, and I would like to just say, now that there's an event tomorrow morning at 10:00 AM at Noviciat Park, where Congressman Licardo will be speaking, and it will describe some of the efforts. And thank you very much to Town Manager and our Town Emergency Manager, Chris Todd, for arranging that and for providing support for that event. Our community needs to know more about what they can do to prepare for wildfire. I participated in a very interesting ribbon cutting at the New Mom School that was founded by a young woman who has, is providing a variety of services for new mothers, and realized that we are not only a healthcare hub here, but we're also a wellness hub here in Los Gatos. I participated in Executive Committee of the Thrives Foundation, and also participated in the regular meeting of the Finance Commission. And then I participated in a fraction of the board meeting of the city's association, because I was out of town. So thank you to the Vice Mayor for substituting. And that's it. So with that, Town Manager.
Just one update. At the Finance Commission, the Finance Commission reviewed a draft request for proposals for three different studies. One was a fiscal impact analysis, which would map out the impacts of the housing element over the course of 2040. The other was a fiscal condition analysis with a five-year forecast, doing an objective external review of our financial condition, and then mapping out, so we can compare to our five-year forecast, what we can see for the next five years. And then an asset liability management study, or so the next week or so. And we'll be moving really quickly to do that analysis, and I think it will play into a lot of the discussions, Mr. Mayor, that came up today about what our fiscal condition is, how are we going to afford to provide these services, how are we going to do the items that have been identified in studies, like the Meliora Study for the Police Department, and try to figure out what our fiscal future is going to look like. With that, I'll turn it back to you.
Okay, thank you. Anything from the Town Attorney's Office that's reportable?
No reportable action, thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you. So with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thanks.